Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us today at the special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, which is called to order today at 6:02 PM. Madam Clerk, may you please take your call?
Yes. Hassan Ahmad, absent. How are you doing?
Here.
Nancy Breyer?
Should be late.
Robert Constant?
Present.
Denise Malinowski-Maxwell?
Here.
Hassan Saab?
Present.
Tom Winsell?
I am, apparently, absent right now. I am going to join the residents as a member of the Dads Club and a father of a Dads Club player until later on in the meeting.
Okay. So we're going to make you absent for the meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you do have a call?
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Next up over here, we have the Agenda Approval. I'm sorry. We're going to go to the Pledge of Allegiance. We won't go ahead and do it with Rose since she just celebrated her 34th birthday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rose. You all may be seated. Next up, we have Agenda Approval.
Council Chair.
Need a pen. Councilman Saab.
Move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the amended Agenda for the special meeting of July 29, 2025, as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up is Public Hearing and Public Comments. Now, before we start this, I have a couple of things that I would just want to put a few House rules out here. If anybody is at the mic, please speak at the mic. The traditional time is two minutes. I'm going to go to four minutes because I know that this is a very sensitive topic. But I also want you to keep in mind if there could be a spokesperson here from the D7 Dads Club that wants to speak, and if you guys want to recommend maybe three or four to speak on behalf, I will allow you guys to speak during the discussion with unlimited time. Because I believe here that a lot of parents are extremely angry and scared, and then people want answers. Rightfully so. You guys deserve that. So I don't want to limit anybody on how long they can speak. What I also don't want to do is have to hear 10, 15 people get up and say all say the same thing. Rightfully so, I'm going to give you guys an additional two minutes without any additional request to be able to speak. I don't know if Sarah, if you want to be one of the spokespersons that can speak during the Agenda Item? Well, yeah, that's what I mean. But what I'm asking is, do you want to be the spokesperson, maybe one other person with you? Okay. And then that way, the public comments can be anybody in the room too that wants to speak regarding... And I'm going to give everybody an additional two minutes. So that way, you guys can get your message across. I do ask that please put your phones on either silent or turn them off. If somebody's speaking, we're not here to be screaming and fighting back and forth. This is not going to turn into everybody jumping and screaming. I think people want answers. Rightfully so. They deserve those answers. We'll go through the process. When we open up the discussion, we're going to have our city clerk, who's a record keeper, to go through the process of what it looks like. And so those at home and here in the audience can go through the process. And so that first process is going to start off with our clerk. She's going to open it up. She even has, I believe she also has information that she can share. And if she's privileged to share, she can go ahead and share those information. So now I'm going to open this up to four minutes for anybody that wants to get up and speak on any Agenda Item, or they can talk about anything they'd like. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. Sir, are you speaking as a special legal counsel or as a resident?
As a resident.
Okay.
Gary Miyaki, Plainfield Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Thank you.
My comments are about Agenda Item 9A. As a parent of a child who played Dearborn Heights soccer for 11 years, I sympathize with the parents of the children affected by this improper release of sensitive information. Frankly, it could have been my wife and I who would be attending if this type of thing happened years ago when it came to the Dearborn Heights Soccer Club. But my comments are about why this happened to ensure, and to ensure, that something like this does not happen again. As far as I can recall, this has not happened in the past, although this type of sensitive information has been routinely provided to the city, and the city has approved similar payments for many years. As a former department head serving in Mayor Canfield's administration, Mayor Pletko's administration, and even Mayor Bazey's administration, it was always understood that we as department heads were responsible for the content of items we submitted for City Council agendas. Not only was this required of us for invoices per the last sentence of City Charter Section 8.9, it was required of us because we had, A, complete familiarity with the items we submitted, and B, the knowledge and expertise to know if information was confidential under the law or otherwise should be withheld or redacted due to its sensitivity. The other check on the possible improper release of sensitive information was the mayor's office. Either the mayor or the mayor's assistant, which is now referred to as chief of staff, would also review each item submitted by department heads. If there were any questions about including or mentioning something as part of the item, then either the mayor or the mayor's assistant, chief of staff, would contact us. If they felt it was best, we would modify the content of what we submitted and resubmit it. This process has been followed for many years, and it has worked, even as recently as last year, with the information submitted by the D7 Dads Club. Importantly, no department head, no mayor, and no mayor's assistant or chief of staff ever said that it was the council secretary's fault, the city clerk's fault, the council chair's fault, or the city council's fault that something was put on the agenda that contained confidential or sensitive information. We as department heads knew, and the mayors as the CEOs of the city knew, that it was our responsibility, and no one else's, to review and to vet information before it was ever submitted for the city council agendas. So in this situation, the breakdown in this process occurred when, one, the Parks and Recreation Director improperly submitted the sensitive information to the mayor's office, and, two, the mayor or his chief of staff failed to catch this mistake. Another factor that must be examined is what role, if any, a lack of knowledge of city procedures and protocols played in this situation. A few months ago, I spoke during public comment, noted that there has been a 300% turnover rate in the mayor's political appointees, and said that this turnover rate would harm the city and its residents due to lack of institutional memory and administrative chaos. Now this unfortunate situation has occurred, and two of the positions involved in the situation have been affected by this 300% turnover rate. Specifically, the current Parks and Recreation Directors have served such director since this mayor took office four years ago, and has only been the director for about six months. Meanwhile, the comptroller's position is vacant, with this administration having nine comptrollers, I believe, frankly, I've lost count, since this mayor took office. The deputy comptroller is trying to cover for the lack of comptroller, and there is little reason to believe that any new person would want to fill this role until the mayor presumably...
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. I appreciate you.
Okay.
I have like one sentence?
I will give you 10 seconds to wrap this up.
So while this, it is unclear about the lack of knowledge playing a role, it is something that must be considered, especially where established processes were not followed that have been followed for years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? How you doing, sir? I'm going to give you four minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Four on top of the four?
No. You're not getting eight.
Good evening. Zohair Abdalha, Dearborn Heights. This is not the first time sensitive information is put out. Lots of the public, they don't know how this process works. Everything comes before Thursday to the clerk's office, and that's when this information is put on the internet. From Thursday until next Tuesday, that's around four or five days, including the weekend. Some of the packets are 400 to 600 pages. The city councils, they can look at things, but I don't, I can assure you, very few of us who can look at 600 pages, word by word and line by line. Lots of times, the administration will put things, and maybe the city council doesn't catch it. It is the duty of the person who put that information out to look at it, to make sure it is not forbidden under the law to be given out. This is not the first time this happened. We believe before, account numbers and ABA numbers were put out, which means somebody, some crook can go and take money from the city, accounts without even asking any word or anybody knows. Such information, I foiled, I just want the public to know, I foiled the payroll of some of the police department appointees who left the city, and some of them still getting paid after I resigned by one year. Without any legal document, without any papers, without any authorization, without anything except the signature of the mayor and the approval of the comptroller. I had last week to sue the city for Freedom of Information because they denied this information. I put it in the same category. Based on what they said, there is litigation, there is sensitive information. But they let something like this slip and goes on the internet with children, minors, their addresses, their names, and all these things. I think the city council should be very tough on this issue. There should be responsibility. The person who put this out, we need to know who it is. I'm not asking you to fire them, but there should be some kind of punishment so this doesn't happen again. And the city council should be more tough on how things are handled by this administration because it looks like there are some people who are on the payroll, which I believe they shouldn't be. There are a couple people, I believe, they are getting paid as part-time employees. They are not even employees of the city. So please, make sure this doesn't happen again because our children, our people deserve to be protected. And I don't want to make a big fuss about this issue. Things can happen, but you have to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do want to be clear, I think we've been tough. I think that's why everybody's kind of like, what's the disconnect between the city and the administration, the city council and the administration? Anyone else in the audience? You have four minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Lori Moline, Berwin Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I am not a lifelong resident of Dearborn Heights, but my husband is. He lived on Lincoln Street until he left for his job and his college. He participated when Pete Stephen was organizing, running, and it was fabulous. It was just great. So our boys got into it too. They participated. We did hockey. We coached. We were there every game, every day. And my kids were four, five, six, up to probably 17. And it was a wonderful thing for these kids. It was fabulous. Wasn't a good job as a parent coach, very unappreciated. I could tell you stories, but I have three minutes left. The thing that needs to be understood here, and I did watch the video from the mayor on Saturday. He very, he got interrupted once, but he did go through the order. And at no time did I hear him blame the council. He gave the order of how the agenda is taken through every step. There was no blame on council that I heard. But there was a bit of hostility in the air, you could tell. It just, there needs to be an understanding that, yes, it is an election year. Yes, things are not amicable between the mayor and city council. It's obvious to those of us that watch these meetings from the beginning of time, from this administration. So the mayor was given an opportunity to say he would work with council. He did not. He was on that video, and he had an opportunity. And if anyone knows the mayor and his military background, I'm sorry, this doesn't fly with me. It just doesn't fly. I mean, if you're a stand-up guy, and you're standing up for your service and everything else, you will not back down. You will hold that. That is you. That represents you. So if you're going to say, "I am a Marine, I am whatever," then you're going to present that. And to not extend that when he had an opportunity is an epic fail to me. And the blaming of the council when he clearly, clearly stated the order, and the council was not to blame, okay? It needs to be clear. I heard it on Saturday. I hope everybody heard that. But he dropped the ball when he had that opportunity to say, "I'm going to work with council," even though you're not really involved. Your hands never touched an 880-page Agenda packet. And that's what it was, really close to 880, and saw anything. But here we are, okay? You guys need to be commended for giving these parents the time and voiced their concerns in a very businesslike way, an amicable way, and respectful way, just as you guys present yourselves every time at a meeting. And I appreciate that. As a former parent of D7 kids, and I loved it, I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear these parents. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much, ma'am. I appreciate you, and thank you for all the kind words. How you doing, sir?
Good afternoon. I haven't been here in a long time.
Please state your name, the city you reside in.
Hassan Uyan, living in Dearborn. Activist.
Okay. Continue.
Kind of disturbing, we got a gentleman over there. What's his name? Oh my God, is that CNN? No. Oh, it's Bill Bazey? Oh, Bill Bazey's absent. Yeah. You know what's bothering me? Mayor dead on arrival. How long has he hasn't been here? First of all. So why did the mayor, or Mariana, or whoever it is, put the names of those children out? That's what I want to know. You know how disturbing this is? I had to, I sat there and I forgot about this, and then I remembered when I triggered about the kids. Understand something. This is what's happening today. Mayor is absent? He's been absent. I came here five months ago, he was absent, still absent. Like, if you want to come show your face, come show your face and say you weren't the one that did it. He's the one that's attacking. He's the one that wants somebody to lose the race. I'm not going to mention names, but we know what's going on here. For something to go on an agenda like this, that's very disrespectful. And I tell everybody, this is uncalled for. You got a mayor missing, no answers. Like, what do people, what do these people, what do they come for? To see the mayor, to answer questions. This guy's been out of the reach for a long time. Nobody can get, I'm not understanding what's going on. He should resign, and that's it. And let me add, I served, the other day, I served a clerk with a Freedom of Information lawsuit. She got it. I'm suing, Zohair Abdalha is suing the city of Dearborn for not releasing the information regarding the chief of police. Mr. Hart is still getting paid, and Vander Plaats is still getting paid, or somebody's still getting paid, and nobody wants to give the information out. Now it's in court. And who's going to be suffering? The people here, because Roger is a conflict, because he used to be a city council member. He's got to recuse himself now. People understand that you guys are paying somebody that's not working here? I'm not understanding that. Why don't you give the information? And when somebody hides information that tells me right there, something's going on, something shady is going on.
I will apologize to your time real quick. I just want you to know that we actually submitted documentation to the Department of Treasury. The Michigan State Police has been notified, and we're going to allow the higher authorities to do their decision on that. That's way over our pay grade. We don't, we've told them to stop, and if they continue to do it, nothing we can do. We're going to allow the authorities to do their job.
But why is an old chief getting paid?
I don't know. Email.
A city that doesn't know what's going on, a mayor that hasn't been here for five, six months, paying everybody? Nine months!
Nothing from the audience, please.
That guy hasn't been here in nine months. Money's getting left and right to residents, like people, the water bills, this, that. This is disgusting. I've never seen something like this. The guy's missing and doesn't want to answer nobody. Like, this is uncalled for. The guy has to file a lawsuit? This is disgusting. Like, guys, what's going on? You're a city council, you can't even figure what's going on. You can't even get your hands on it. Why? As a city council, can you get the information for us? That's what I want to know.
No.
Wow. City council cannot get information from a city? Wow, this is disgusting.
If the clerk has it, we can get it. If it's outside of the clerk's department, we won't be able to get it.
How is that? If you are a person in the city, you're allowed to go to any department to get it without a Freedom of Information. Am I correct?
Correct.
Think. What's going on here?
Please.
Yeah, no, it's frustrating, bro. It's very frustrating. What's going on? Just tell us. If the residents don't know what's going on, I know what's going on. I get the whole inside, people calling me on Facebook, calling me on my phone, telling me, "Hey, 123 is going on." I put the pieces together. I'm right here to talk to you about it. So can you please try to get the information, or you can't?
We've asked. I've asked since...
I think Mr. Saab can get the information if he needed to.
Sir, your time is up now. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else in the audience before I move over to Zoom?
Council Chair.
Go ahead. Speaking as a councilman?
Yes.
And regarding to public comments? Are you talking about the Agenda? Because you could talk during the Agenda.
Well, just I'll swing to the Agenda.
Okay. Then we're going to move it over to, move it over to Zoom if I have no one else in the audience. Move it over to Zoom. Let's go with Chris LaPointe. We're going to give you four minutes.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Chris LaPointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
For those unaware, I've been involved as a political activist in the city since 2021. That's a special interest. The first thing, I heard the mayor say he wasn't going to be there today because, quote, "It's going to be an attack on my administration," unquote. It's disappointing to hear that the mayor would turn our kids' privacy into just another political chess piece, and to set this meeting up for failure before it even began. So instead of a coherent picture and plan going forward, we're likely going to have more he-said, she-said, this alles nothing at the end of this meeting. I call on every single city official to put aside any and all personal feelings and come together to do everything in their power to better protect our children and our data. Moreover, your request for the mayor's presence here at this meeting satisfies Charter 6.10, so I'd investigate why the mayor thinks he can continue to violate the laws of our city. Now, I've got a few simple questions that can be answered afterwards. The first one, Mo, the mayor claimed that you had from 12:01 Tuesday until Thursday afternoon to look at the full Agenda and remove anything. Can you tell us how much of the Agenda you received on Tuesday, and if the Claim section, where this information was leaked, was part of what you had access to? Also, can you tell us when the mayor first made aware, was first made aware of the leak? I heard it was Friday around noon, about one hour after it was reported, but I wanted to have a clear answer from the city on record. Also, does the city have a written process on what to do when there's a breach of data? I'm trained on HIPAA rules each year. Do we have something similar for our employees? Now, we all know there's been high turnover at director and comptroller positions. Mr. Miyaki referenced that. But I'm also wondering if we've had any other changes or interim positions or anything else, you know, chief of staff, clerk, secretary, anyone else involved with the Agenda recently that could have impacted this area. I also want to add that it's disappointing that the mayor claimed multiple times that this happened because it's an election year. He's insinuating that this was caused by those running for council and mayor rather than by his acquaintances. This is chilling language, a lack of accountability, and does not fix things. Based on this accusation, it feels like any investigation he's involved in will be deeply biased and untrustworthy, as well as a conflict of interest. Therefore, I'm asking for four things to come out of this meeting. Number one, I want the city to follow Michigan's Identity Theft Protection Act. That law requires a notice to the affected parties without unreasonable delay. Second, I want the city to issue a profuse apology to the Dads Club without attacking others. They deserve a true apology, and the city needs to do everything possible to make sure that enrollment in leagues does not drop due to this. Third, I want council to hold a study session next Tuesday to develop a new ordinance to spell, to specifically lay out the processes and procedures of the Agenda creation process with a focus on identifying and redacting personal information from the public. And I want you to use Charter 7.3B to declare this an emergency action and vote to pass the ordinance at the next regular meeting or at a special meeting following. Council, the fourth one, council, I want to begin a formal investigation into the breach. This will make the investigation process much more open and transparent by taking place in the public instead of behind closed doors, and will prevent any conflicts of interest by any city officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we got Rachel. You have four minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Hey, guys. So, sorry, I just passed up something. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Rachel LaPointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. I just want to thank you guys for adding this to the Agenda tonight on short notice. I think that shows your willingness to work with everyone, and I hope that everyone is coming to the table tonight with that same openness and willingness. I just wanted to say kind of for the record that, you know, Chris and I were the ones who found the data leak. He actually discovered it. He's been trained in all these data protection things. And HIPAA, because that's what he does. And because he knows those best practices, we immediately informed the clerk's office so that it could be removed as quickly as possible and not seen, hopefully, by anybody besides us and maybe the clerk's office and the other employees, that because it was done in such a fast amount of time, the least amount of people were able to see it, and the least amount of harm would be able to be caused. So I hope everybody just understands that we're, you know, we're trying to do our best to follow those best practices and notify the people in charge. And maybe we were too trusting in this administration to fully do the process the best way and the timeliest manner. But, you know, everybody makes mistakes, and I think that's the only other thing I want to add, is that we are all people. And I think sometimes people forget that elected officials are people too. And they're human beings that go home in the same neighborhoods that you live in. They're your neighbors. They have kids. They have lives outside of the city. Every employee at the city goes home to their families just the same as every one of us. And that doesn't mean that there doesn't need to be accountability and a new process. I think it's very clear that there is no written process in the city in regards to redactions and how they happen. And honestly, I think that's kind of part of what Mr. Miyaki was saying, that because those directors were there for such a long time and had been doing that job for so long, they didn't write it down so that when somebody new came in, they knew what to do. So we need to make sure that those policies get written down and that we have a strong path moving forward based on security best practices. And I trust that you guys will make sure that that gets done, and that our community, I know that the D7 Dads Club will not rest until this is done, and I've got their backs every step of the way, and I will be here for them no matter what. So I hope they can understand that because I'm just a person too.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you. Anyone else before I close out public comments? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. This is, it hits home to me because I was raised, I played D7 sports all the way through, and my son has as well, up until COVID hit. But I trust you guys, and I know that you guys will get to the bottom of this, and it's very disappointing for me to stand here and see that seat empty. It's not right. These people are owed, and so is the rest of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Seeing none, we're going to move it over to the next line item. Next up, we have 9A or Council Chair Baydoun's D7 Dads Club Discussion. There is really no recommendation, recommended motion here. So I'll just, can I just get a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Baydoun, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Um, any discussions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone.
Council chair, just, can we motion to?
Motion to open up, just open up a discussion with, uh, you know, three representatives from the D7 Dance Club, uh, to have the open floor along this body and the clerks.
Thank you.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Baydun, seconded by Councilman Saab.
Thank you.
Thank you. All, all in favor, well, no, open up for discussion. I don't know, I'm sorry, my head's not looking. Uh, you know, before we start, Councilman, I do want to give the opportunity for the clerk to open up the floor. And, and what's going to happen here, guys, is everybody here wants an answer. Uh, the truth is this. Um, she is the records keeper of the city, of the entire city, and the clerk can go through, and if there's anybody that's got the institutional knowledge, and if there's anybody that's not here to play politics, it's going to be our clerk, uh, because she is somebody that truly deeply cares about, not just students, because she was a former trustee, uh, but she is also the, um, heart and soul to our community. And, and I know that you're going to speak the truth here, and the residents deserve that, and you guys deserve that. And so this is the moment where you guys will be able to hear the process of what happens when any documentation comes before the city. Also, what had happened once this documentation was submitted to the city, how it was removed, what type of conversations happened. And clerk, I want you to be brutally honest with everybody.
Do you want me here or here?
You can stand, you can stand there.
I'd like to see them, okay?
Okay. Just speak, just speak in.
Into the mic?
Into the mic.
Okay. My name is Lynn Senya, I'm your city clerk. I have been an employee of the city for, um, over eighteen years. I've lived in the community for forty and grew up in Taylor, so I'm not too far. Um, we have a solid staff of four, um, employees and myself included. Georgie Anne's been with the city since 2017, uh, um, is the current council secretary. I was the council secretary, and in between us was Dana Flomant, and she's now the deputy clerk. And then we have Sally, who, we've all been here for quite some time. Um, so what I'd like to do right now is just tell you what happens when it gets to our, before, the whole process of the submission to, um, I'm going to just tell you, okay? So, yeah, we run through Civic Clerk, which is, um, a program that everything is uploaded to. So the process for submitting items to Civic Clerk, the only parties hereinafter referred to as admins that can approve and submit for the agenda are the mayor, the clerk, the treasurer, the city council, which are all elected officials, uh, the court, the TFA in pension. All other departments admissions or submissions under the mayor's leadership are subject to his approval. Each individual admin has their own internal approval process before they are submitted through Civic Clerk. So he would have to, um, this was a response to an email that the mayor said so. Um, he, so he would have to check with each administrator regarding their procedures. Uh, from there, the process is as follows. Admins or directors reviews, redacts, and uploads agenda items. This includes the comptroller's submission of claims as received by various departments. For items submitted by non-mayor admins, which be, would be the clerk, the council, the treasurer, the TFA, the court in pension, the adminis, the admin has the authority to approve slash review their own items, which includes the redaction of confidential information before submission. Once uploaded, these items are considered ready for publication. For items subject to the mayor's approval, historically, the directors have been, and historically, because I don't know what the mayor's process is for, for, for leading up to the approval. So I can only, um, base this knowledge on the historical information that I have. Historically, the directors have been responsible for reviewing and redacting of confidential information within material they submit with final review of, of the administrative assistant, assistant or chief of staff. The mayor's office receives notification of the submission of these items, and they are now subject to the mayor's approval. Claims are a bit different in that they may be reviewed by the director submitting the material to the comptroller's office, as well as the comptroller's office as their preparer of the claims as a whole. Once approved by admin, mayor, or another administrator, the items are considered ready for publication, and the clerk's office does not have the authority to alter or redact any material. Um, the council secretary submits by the end of the day on Wednesday or early Thursday morning the agenda and claims preview with only those items fully approved by the mayor or other and minis, admins to the city council chair for approval. Like I said, I was, um, council chair, and we have, um, our councilwoman Denise Malinowski was also chair. Um, council chair Baydun is chair, and I believe council, Councilman Conston was as well, in former, um, abdullah. So, um, backup is now provided. They see the sheet of, um, of the agenda topics as well as the claims. Once the agenda and claims preview has been approved by the city council chairperson, the packet is published. The items, the agenda items are due to the clerk's office by Tuesday before, before the meeting at noon. So that's how the process goes.
Can I just break it down in quick layman terms?
Yes.
If you don't mind. Guys, in quick, real quick, there's four entities in the city. There's the mayor's office, the city council, there's the treasurer, there's the clerk. If, for example, Councilman Wanso, who in the past couple of months has been sending me a lot of things that he wants on the agenda, he sends it directly to me. Doesn't send it to Civic Plus, doesn't send it to the clerk, doesn't send it to the clerk's secretary, he sends it to me. I review the documents that he wants submitted. And then I give approval to the clerk. This can be published at councilman, you know, by Councilman Wanso, and then we're CC'd on an email. If somebody from the treasurer's department, you know, the deputy treasurer right now says, I want to add something onto the agenda, that deputy treasurer will send it to the treasurer, she will review that. She is her own entity. I'm not going to see what the deputy treasurer wants to submit, and I'm not going to give her that approval. The only document that I approve is that document right there, right there. And if, if we can scroll through, I don't know if you guys can get them to do that, but.
Let's behind them too.
That is the agenda. I look, and I saw approval of the special minutes, approval of the, you know, agenda, uh, uh, you know, what's coming from our treasurer. I saw the D7 Dance Club in there, there are zero backups given. The backup is given to the mayor's office for final review. And this isn't me pointing fingers, this is the process. I'm not going to review what the Parks and Rec director wants to submit. I'm not going to review what, uh, uh, the city engineer or the police chief's going to submit. No, that's the discussion between the administration, and that's, and that's his appointees.
Council chair, and when it comes to the claims preview, you only see a list of the claims?
Yes. And so when it comes to the claims, I get one through twenty, or one through fifty, and this is the amount, and this is what we're paying out for. Now, on Thursday, everything gets published, Thursday at five o'clock. And, and I want to make also for full disclosure to respond to Chris LaPointe, I don't get anything at 12:01 on Tuesday. That document that was received for previews was sent to me on Wednesday. We discussed, Thursday, I gave the green light for this to be published, it went out for published. My process on doing things that I've been doing for the last four years, Saturday morning, I wake up with my kids, I have my cup of coffee, and I review my documents. Saturday night, I have, hanging out at night, I review my documents. Tuesday, I do another quick overview. I would have never seen anything until Saturday for myself. I can't speak for the rest of the council members. But as the council chairman, I see an agenda preview and a claims preview. Whatever's published is from each separate entity. So if the treasurer wanted something with a backup, I'm not going to review that until it's published. And that same thing goes for every single entity. The clerk would do the same, the mayor's office would do the same, and the city council would do the same. Uh, because no entity knows what's being published until Thursday. The mayor's entity will know what they're publishing. They won't see what we added to the agenda until Thursday. So if I went out there and put something on the agenda, the mayor won't know until Thursday morning. Is that correct? Or Thursday, uh?
Four or five.
Yeah, four or five o'clock on Thursday afternoon. So I just want you guys to remember, these are four separate entities. And every entity submits into BSNA, it goes to Civic Plus, I'm sorry, to Civic Plus, and then everything gets published once there's approval by the council chair. But you can continue on.
Just a little bit about what happened, okay? Um, I was in the car with my four-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter when I got a call and a text from Rachel to alert me to what happened. I came into work, and I did discuss this with the comptroller, and it happened to be that Roger Farina was in the office with him as well. So they were aware of the incident. Um, I know, I don't know exactly what happened since then, but I know that a couple, well, email threads that were going around on what they were going to do, but I don't know that anything had been done that was mentioned in those emails.
Um, were there any opinion letters in these emails?
There was attorney, there was attorney recommendations, there were directors' recommendations.
And that was the Friday that it was taken down? Thursday, it was taken down Friday?
Hmm, I don't think it was, it wasn't that Friday. It was not that Friday. It might have been Monday. I don't know exactly the date. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, the, it was taken down within 24 hours. Are you talking about the?
I'm talking about, when did you?
The claim?
The opinions from the attorney.
Oh, that's when, okay. Um, I don't know when it actually, it wasn't Friday. I think it maybe have started on Monday. Um, here we go.
Also, I just also want to make clear, I found out on social media like many of you did, like I had no idea. I said, what are you guys talking about?
Well, I'm coming to the first one that I got, it was Wednesday, actually. It was Wednesday, when there was communication, I think, from one of the leaders of the District Seven Dance Club.
Any, uh, other discussion?
I can't, yeah, I think, and. Yeah, I think, and there was a couple of different threads going on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council chair. Councilman Saab at first, Councilwoman Yur second, and I'll go to Councilman Conston after. And then, uh, any of the individuals that want to step forward? Also have a discussion on this, I'd like to hear it from you guys as well.
Good evening, everyone. So, opening up discussion isn't starting off. I'm sorry on behalf of the city. The city dropped the ball, plain and simple. Um, I want to speak and put some facts on the record about what really happened with this administration. I'm not here to point finger or bash everybody or anybody, but it's the truth. The mayor has been in DC past few months, and now he really hasn't been in the city. The chief of staff for the past two weeks, when this agenda was put out, was on vacation. The mayor had a part-time employee as interim chief of staff. So when the stuff was submitted to the mayor, it was uploaded by, I'm not going to name a city employee, but it was appointed, it was uploaded by, the claims was approved by, uh, the mayor's secretary on behalf of the mayor. That's who approved the agenda, the claims. So for us to sit there, have meetings at the parks, and, and not give a real answer is not the right direction to go. The city dropped the ball. We owe the parents an honest investigation, and honest results of this investigation of who dropped the ball and who did what. Not to point fingers that someone did this or somebody failed to do that. We have an IT department, and I've reached out to the IT department, I have yet to get a response back. Um, this investigation should be done by an external entity, not within the city, because apparently no, nothing would happen within the city. That's, I'm being very blunt, I'm not speaking as an elected official, I'm speaking as a resident. Tell you that. Uh, kids are a red line. And it's a red line that should never have been crossed, and it should never be crossed again. And the city's got to put procedures in place to protect these kids too in the future. People's identities are on, out there. You got people that are living in the area that other people shouldn't know where they're living. There's issues out there that, you know, we can't discuss. This email going around with opinions and all that, I've never seen it. I haven't seen anything, no recommendations have made to, been made to council. The problem is this. When the agenda is posted out, I don't look at my agenda until Saturday, because if I can't commit eight hours to it, I will not open it up. I did not see any names. I, just like anybody else found about it on social media. Um, and really, what I was expecting from the mayor is an email of what happened, or the breakdown, or there's a fallout in this, and we never received nothing. The residents here probably know more than we do. But the one thing I don't want to talk about is the kids, because these are minors. I'm not going to name names, I'm not going to name what they do. We're here, I want an explanation from the administration, from the police department, of what happened, who's responsible. And whoever is responsible honestly needs to be held accountable, even if that means terminating the person. Because this has never happened before. This has never happened before. I mean, you submit a package and you don't look at it as administrator, as a director, the mayor's office, nobody looks at them? I mean, I go through my package, I go through my package page by page. And Lynn could tell you, the administration could tell you, nobody shoots out more emails than I do. And honestly, the city dropped the ball here. And if the city's not going to take blame for it, I'll take the blame for it. I represent the city. And we got to do better, and we got to do right. And, and, and I asked the administration, and I know the mayor hasn't been here, and, and sorry, it hasn't been five or nine months, it's been 10 months. Uh, the mayor's attorney to, you know, and the chief, honestly, submit this to an external department, external entity to investigate this, because the ball was dropped somewhere, even if it's human error. There's a lot of information out there that should not be out there. I don't know who downloaded it, what anybody's doing with those downloads, there's the dark web out there. I mean, these are things we've got to take into consideration. And we, and I accept, you know, we expect answers, I do at least. And there's nobody here from the administration that's going to speak up, because the last thing we heard is that the mayor won't show up because we're going to attack him. This is not an attack on the mayor administration. The city dropped the ball, plain and simple. But it was dropped at the administrative level, because everything is turned in by the administration. And again, I'm sorry on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just kind of confused on how the leak of the names of the children happened. Um, Lynn, I have a question, when you submit, actually, it should have been pulled out by the mayor's office, but I guess accidents happen. When you submit the agenda for approval, are you including all the backup to be read, that could be read? Because I know you and I went over the agenda.
Your microphone is off.
That council chair. Because I remember us pulling things off and discussing it, because there were some things I felt shouldn't be on there. Remember, we did?
I've done that, yeah, we do that as well.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to make a suggestion, is maybe you should, um, present the entire packet so they can read everything, because if nobody else caught it, we're the end, and then we got to, you know, we're looking bad in the end, because we didn't even have a chance to look at it and see, you know? It's there to look at, I guess, because, well, you got to look at it eventually anyways for the meeting, so a few days earlier doesn't hurt, and if it helps the public by avoiding something like this, you know? It might be procedure, whether they choose, you know, whether they choose to read it or not, but at least it'd be there. But I think the responsibility. Something funny. I mean, that's a great idea, but the responsibility really goes with those that, they need to thoroughly look over what they're submitting.
Right.
And then there's two and three. No, it's not a bad idea, when I'm saying that.
No, I said, the bad thing is, is it makes the council chair look bad when they didn't even have the opportunity to see it and pull it out as the last resort, and they're the final approval of the agenda. So it makes them being the end of everything look like the bad person when actually they're not, but it might be better to clean it up before it gets to the printing.
And by the way, I just want you to know, she used the same procedures that you used, that Councilman Conston used, that Councilman Abdullah used. You guys, none of you guys got backup.
Right, so that's why I'm saying, maybe it's time for change. So this doesn't happen again.
That's a good policy.
We can save this from ever happening again in our city.
Hundred percent.
And I definitely, I can't remember, oh, it was probably Chris LaPointe, we need to have procedures.
Because I remember you and I pulling things off them more than once.
Yeah, you would look at it, and you would.
Ask for the backup.
I'm not saying that.
Yeah, I would ask for the backup.
Council chair, Baydun did this, has done this whole thing.
I want you to know, in the situation for the D7 Dance Club, I would have never said, I want to remove this, let me see the backup. Because I, I never had intention to not support it.
No, 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 I understand that. You would have never expected that to be there. That's a total surprise, it's never been there in the past, and it will never be there in the future.
The backup for the D7?
Was it, it wasn't there, right?
No, I was never given a backup, but we've seen things where we had to reimburse, like, the Panthers, or the Raiders, or the B7.
And it's always, it's typically just a sheet of paper, it's a sort of request. Technically, in the past, they've never included anything like this, so you wouldn't see it coming.
You could see an amount.
You just see an amount?
Yeah. And that's what you would expect. I mean, because for, probably since the city's formation, that's how it's always been, it's just that request. There's so many stu-, or students, athletes, times the dollar amount, and that's what they're being reimbursed.
One thing we can all agree on is this was a big, big mistake, and it will never happen again. We're going to put something in place that it will prevent this from ever happening again. Not with just this, but anything, any special.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Conston?
Thank you, council chair.
Thank you, council chair. As a former D7 parent and D7 coach, I think D7 and the city are entitled to a explanation of what happened. I think the city needs a data privacy policy going forward, so this doesn't happen again. You mentioned Civic Plus. Civic Plus specifically has provision protecting the privacy of children 14 and under, and they have built into their software some protection. I think that we, we need to look at our, all our documents that we publish, our council meeting, agenda, any account numbers, any private information. The city is obligated now to notify everyone that there's been a breach, a data breach, and then Michigan law provides, there's certain procedure, and I, I'm sure you've all seen it, some companies provide people credit protection for a year or different things. So there's a remedy that the parents are entitled to.
I agree. Thank you. I'd like to hear from somebody from the D7, if they want to step up. Just state your name.
Sarah Short. So us as parents, we have a lot of questions, and it seems like some of them have been answered. But first, I would like to ask that the clerk record everything that is going to be said, for the minutes, the questions and the answers. And I would like to hand you guys this petition that we wrote, with, as of today, there was over 350 signatures in regards to this issue getting resolved and protecting our kids. So, we've gone through what the process is to prepare the agenda. First, it goes from Parks and Rec to the comptroller's office, to the council secretary, and then the council chair is the end approval. Is that correct? Oh, I'm sorry, it was the mayor's secretary, and then the council chair? Somebody lay it out for me, so we have the answer.
It starts at the parks.
Yep, Parks and Rec.
It gets submitted to the comptroller.
Correct.
Then it gets submitted to the mayor's office for review.
Got it.
And if he approves it, he'll submit it to-
Then it goes to council chair for end approval?
No, he'll submit it to Civic Plus. And then it gets to the council secretary.
Okay. That was a lot of the questions us parents had. So, we went through all that, and our biggest question was, who specifically receives the agenda and has every year until now redacted that information?
That would be the mayor's office.
No. It's not the mayor's office, because it's always the same person who we hand it to.
Who did you hand it to this year?
We handed it to Cheryl Frank at the Parks and Rec, who every year until now has redacted that information. So why did that not happen this year?
Director?
I got it. And by the way, just for full disclosure, just because we want to follow order, go through the council chair, and then I'm gonna have, actually, hang on a second, can you see if he has an extra mic? So that way, Sarah can stay there, the parks.
Testing.
I can share.
You can just take, you can just take the microphone off the actual stand.
Oh, it comes up.
There you go. So, so before we start, Sarah, repeat your question just into the mic, so for the record.
So my question was, is if the Dad's Club personnel hand these forms into Cheryl Frank every year, and she is the one to redact that information, why did that not happen this year?
I'm gonna ask you two things. Madam clerk, can you see if Cheryl Frank is online?
Sorry, just search for CH, I don't see anything.
Look, she's under her phone.
And I'll look on, I mean, I don't know.
It's okay, I just wanted to know if she wanted to speak or not, but here we have the director of Parks and Rec, so.
Okay, so I'll give you a transparent view of exactly what happens here. First, I just want to assure you that your child's safety is number one with us. I've done programming for tens of thousands of, of children for 20 years, and I never had a safety issue during all that time. And just to add to it, my son was part of the D7 baseball team, so I, I know that he's involved in it, and it's, is part of us. These allotments are paid by the recreation department to all of our sports teams. The reason for the allotments are to enable our student, our resident children access to these sports programs that are affordable to them. So, I know the programs can get expensive, as we know everything has, and so these allotments are, are paid to all residents. So what happens here is we, we pay out about $35,000 worth of allotments to all these teams. This is D7 Dad's Club, Raiders, Wolverines, soccer. It's, a lot of children are involved in this, just so you know that. Their process is, once they sign up all their, their children to the, the teams, they send us a list of all the names and addresses of those participants. Then we have to do our due diligence to verify that all the people on the list, how many of them are Dearborn Heights residents?
Well, what do you need the data burst for, then?
I was not aware we had the data burst, we didn't really need that. All we need is name and addresses.
Can we?
Well, hang on, I'm sorry, I, I want to, go ahead, let him finish.
So we verify name and addresses to verify we're only paying for residents, which is what we do. Once we get that list, and we verify the residents, then the list, we type up a letter to council that will go to you and say, this is how many, you know, people are, being the allotments are for, at the, the rate of whatever it is. It varies for each different sport. And then we send it to you for payment, and we do send that list as backup to be transparent. So if anyone were ever questioned, are we giving out more money to somebody that we shouldn't? That we, did we do our job and make sure those are all residents? Yes, we did. And we keep that, that, that goes on, and this is, this is sent as like an invoice, like we get an invoice for anything we purchase. The letter, the list is backup, and that goes into a file for payment.
Do you not redact the information?
We do not, we do not. It's not been that, I'm just following the procedure that's been established for over 11 years. In 11 years of sending these, these reports, never has anything ever happened.
For 11 years, though. You haven't been in-
I haven't been here, no, but we looked at our records for 11 years that we've submitted this, and there's never been an issue. Somewhere down the line, that information never appears in the agenda. So that's, you know, we knew that. And when this breach came, Mr. Doni called me, and he says, do you know that these names are out? I said, I have no idea, I've never heard of this. Within two minutes, I checked with the clerk. They said that it had already been done last week, it was taken off, and I called him right back and said, you know, this was already taken down. So we responded immediately.
But hold on, I gotta, you're confusing me. You said for 11 years that this has been the process in the city?
Because we have the records for 11 years.
Okay, but, but it's never published, though, in the last 11 years?
You're correct. And I, that's where I don't know how that ever, how this ever was, was changed, how this ever was missed.
I'm gonna drop the ball here. Yeah, I'm gonna drop the ball.
Right, we don't, we don't know where, but somebody has always taken those out.
Council chair? Hang on, I'm gonna go ahead and ask her a question. I mean, I, I honestly, like, I'm embarrassed to hear that. We still don't know who dropped the ball, it's been two weeks.
So my first question would be that, moving forward, is D7 going to be able to provide the city only? You do not need to know what street, or the kids' birthdays, or the parents' phone numbers. If it is by the city, we should be able to list their city only and turn it in that way?
I think you need to have some type of address.
We, we would need the address, but immediately after I heard that this happened, I said, why do we even send this backup information? Why don't we just keep it on file in our office and just say, if anyone wants to question it, it's available on their request? That was, seemed like a very easy answer, to do it immediately. So it never would have the opportunity to somehow slide by and, and this would ever happen.
There needs to be some type of policy and procedure overall. I mean, you can't, we can't just, there has to be a written policy that, that if tomorrow Mo Badun's not here, and Clerk Lynn Sinney's not here, people know that this is the policy that needs to be followed.
Absolutely.
Look, I'm not blaming you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here to put the blame on anybody. What I can tell you is, there's been several different comptrollers, several different, you know, we have a new Parks and Rec director, we have a new, we had an interim chief of staff. The moral of the story is, if there was a policy in place and everybody knew what this policy was and went through proper training, we wouldn't be in this mess.
So that's part of my question, and I'm not sure why you didn't answer my initial question. Cheryl Frank, every year has redacted that information before it has been sent.
She's, she's followed the same procedure.
Exactly, so why did she not follow it this year?
She did follow it, she did exactly what she always does. She writes up the summary- and sends it through. It, I think it would be-
They're all shaking their head yes.
I think it would be very simple to look at what is received by the comptroller's office, and you'll be able to see the documentation and the letter.
So how far back do we keep the documentation? Do we have last year's?
Let me, let me ask a question.
I'm sorry, somebody's online that might be, have an answer, okay?
Who's that? Nikki? Okay, she worked for the comptroller's office for many, many, many years. Not that she's old.
No, she's not, he's just, go ahead, Nikki.
Hi, can you hear me?
She's very young, by the way. Yes, Nikki?
Hi, I used to work in that office from 2011 until the beginning of 2023. When those allotment payments used to come over, it was only the cover letter that stated, we have X amount of participants that signed up, the amount that was due, if it was over the, you know-
Council chair, could you have her identify her name, please, who's talking? For the record.
My name is Nicole Crowe. Do you know my street?
Yeah.
Academy Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you. So, Nikki, my question-
It was just the cover letter. We've never received the backup of the actual names of the participants. And like I said, I did that job from 2011 to 2023. So there was never any backup. If we needed the backup, we knew we could go to Parks and Rec and get it if we needed it.
So Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec never used to send you the actual information, is what you're saying?
Correct, correct. It was the cover letter of how many participants and what the amount of the payment was to be issued.
Okay, my question to you, director, is, who submitted that document to Parks and Recreation? I mean, to, to the comptroller's office?
Our clerk, Cheryl Frank.
Okay. Cheryl dropped the ball.
Council chair?
Yeah.
I just want to, I just want to echo to something. But again, there's checks and balances. If she submitted it to the comptroller, sent it to the mayor's office, there would have been two additional eyes on it, two, two additional sets of eyes to actually see this information before you got approved to go into Civic Plus.
Absolutely, but if I do something for seven years in a row, and then I all of a sudden change it, I think there's a reason why, and I might be able to shed some light on that reason why. Can I play this recording I have?
Sure. There's no swearing, nothing's illegal?
No.
Go ahead.
Let me know if you recognize any of these voices.
Can you put it in his microphone?
Do you want me to start it over?
Yeah.
Question, did they know they were being recorded?
Did they know they were being recorded?
You gotta be careful on this.
I would ask that you follow the advice on not playing the recording if we don't know who-
Thank you, let's stop it. You really shouldn't, because if they were not recording-
Point of order, guys, one second, we're gonna go through the chair. Point of order, councilwoman, hang on. Gary, is this allowed to be played or no?
This is, it's a one-party state, and the person recording it sent this to me.
If it can't be verified, that person-
Was aware.
Thank you. Let's not do that.
So-
Put a record, I'm not, I'm not alluding to it, I'm telling you.
So as I said, the person that recorded this sent it directly to me. Seeing as it's a one-party state, you are allowed to record in a one-party state.
Why don't you just tell us what it says on there? And who, who do you think it is?
Essentially, it's not who I think, we pulled the recording from a video. So Tom Wenzel is not a fan of you, okay?
Of who?
You.
What does they have to do with this whole thing?
Well, here, here, here's where it gets kind of sticky. So, one of our D7 Dad's Club representatives got this text message from Mr. Wenzel. And it states clearly, you have no idea what I've done behind the scenes to help the Dad's Club. Take a wild guess who stopped Cheryl from getting the city, the use of the city fields. So now, do I think that it was malicious, that someone posted our children's information on a public forum? Absolutely. Do I want something to be done so this never happens again? 100%. So please, council, tell me, what can be done?
Can you continue to tell me what else this says?
That's it, that's the end of the text message. Take a wild guess who stopped Cheryl from getting the use of city fields. Now, public information shows that Cheryl has ties with APAC.
What's that?
It's Allen Park softball and baseball. Sounds like they could use our fields, huh? They could probably make money off of them if-
Is there a mic? Is there a mic? Mike, did me and you talk this year? You called me about this ABA or-
APAC?
APAC.
I think you told me about this, and, and you, you asked me about this, correct? And if you don't, you don't want to talk about it, you don't have to. Okay, then don't worry about it. Yeah, I, I, we'll talk later. Okay, I got a phone call.
My issue here is, it seems like it's bigger, and I understand that these fields could be used for other things. I have a son, he plays travel ball, and he's been playing for Dad's Club since he was about five years old. This kid has been in competitive games. He's gotten better, advanced. He's doing great things. His favorite field to be on is at Swapka Park, with Coach Joe, and the Donies, and these people that have made us feel like family. A lot of us families in Dearborn Heights, we're all we got. There's a lot of us that are just out here raising kids by ourselves with a couple of people by our side. These people made this place feel like home. Now, for somebody to want to come in and take these fields to make money, I get it. But money's not everything when it comes to raising kids, because I'll tell you, as a mom, I'd rather be with my kid than go to work and make money. We don't all have that choice. But this city, what is it about? Is it about raising kids? Is it about the next generation? Or is it about the next dollar that the city's gonna get? A couple other questions I do have.
I have a quick question before you start. If we may. Councilman, do you want to respond to that, if that was ever said?
Dad's Club parent.
Okay. Continue on.
Council chair, I'm sorry. Ms. Short, if you don't mind, I know you have the record, but if you can, I'm trying, I couldn't understand the recording. If you can explain what the recording was, I'd honestly, I'd like to know.
I'd honestly have to listen to it again, there's a lot going on up here.
If you can send it to me, or email it to us, I'd honestly, I'd like to hear it.
I can do that.
Please.
Yep.
But I mean, I'm just kind of, council chair, I'm sorry.
Hang on, I'm gonna hear from Councilman Conson, and then it was you.
Quick question for Director Zaboznik. Is it possible that, with all the changes, that that was not one of Cheryl's jobs anymore, to redact those addresses and so forth? Is, is that still her duty?
I mean, it is, as of right now, yes, and I understand she was following the same procedures she had for years. So that's something we'd have to look into, that's what I understand. She's followed the same procedures that she had for every year. I will tell you that I've never heard that the fields are available at Swapka. They are exclusively for use at D7's Dad's Club. And anytime anybody wants to use them, I'm always asking Mr. Doni, are they in use? Would you like to allow it? We've had a case where the football team wanted to use them, he said, no, they can't, and no, it was. They, that is their fields exclusively for their use, and that's, that's just the rules, that's just the way it's, it is. And, and that's fine, because that's for our kids. And, and that's fine, because that's for our kids, they're number one, they get first priority to everything in the city.
Why would, why would they want to use a baseball, a bunch of football players use a baseball field?
Because they're-
That's a perfect question.
I, I can explain that. Their practice is at the Annapolis Football Field on Fridays, and Annapolis has games on the Fridays, this is for September, so they were asking if they could practice on one of the Swapka fields.
On the Diamonds?
And that's a point that Mr. Donie brought up, you do not want them on the Diamonds, because they will ruin it, and I think they had some kind of skids or something on the field, he said, "Do you know they have skids there?" I go, "I was not aware of it." He says, "They'll tear up our fields," and we agreed, and we denied it to him, we said, "Sorry, you can't have it."
I mean, look, I love kids' sports, but let's, let's think about this, even, even the thought of even telling children that you can practice football, and where you can even, imagine the injury.
Yeah, you dig a, you dig a rut in them-
Yeah.
On that field, them kids are running bases, you got a broken ankle.
Oh, man, like, that's not even like-
Where the ice rink was, they don't practice on the field. Practice next to OWV, or half-practice.
I mean, I don't know. I'm not a huge fan of the Panthers, by the way, but I don't think they should be using our, I don't think anything but baseball should be used on a baseball field, nothing on the, on the hockey should be used other than hockey, and nothing on the football field should be used other than football and soccer.
Right, right, well, that's, that's correct, and obviously, we respected D7 and what they said, and we carried it out, but that, that was the request, they asked us.
Is this the first year they've ever requested that?
Yes, it's the first year I've ever encountered that.
No, it's not, my son has been at, involved in D7 for a very long time, and I have watched football teams practice on those fields.
No way.
And that brings me to a whole nother issue, how can we help upkeep our fields?
Counsel Chair?
Let's hold the discussion, let you finish, I'm gonna go to Councilman Con-
That is part of one of my questions, just a heads up. Go ahead and brainstorm.
Okay. Go ahead, would you-
I just, like, this kind of changes my perspective of things for a little. You know, Councilman Wensel today wants to, wants to say as a resident, and I respect that for him, but you're an elected official, you should be sitting here and taking questions on behalf of parents. Second thing is, is that now it kind of makes, sound kind of makes sense.
Crazy.
Yeah, and I'm gonna put this on the record. I'm somebody that donates to all organizations across the city. I have reached out to Tom Wensel multiple times, "What can we do to help out the D7 Dads Club? Come on, donate." "Well, we're working on something, I'm working on something, and, and I'll get back to you, and this and that," and, in a way, I seem like he was trying to distance me away from the club. And now, with this, it's, it's, Tom, please, don't interrupt. Just last week, I had a conversation with him, "What can I do to help out the D7 Dads Club?" Well, his exact words verbatim, "They've been ghosting me for the past month, I'll let you know what we could do."
This is why-
But I go on social media, and this is how I find out information, I'm getting bashed by every single person, and this is what I'm hearing, people call me that, some way, somehow, myself, Council, Council Chair Badun, we're planning to give these fields out to friends, and to redevelopments, and if anybody actually watches our meetings, there's nobody that advocates more than I do for youth programs in the city.
Hold on.
Hold on, and you. I, 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 I have requested, at every single budget that I've been on council, for a grant writer-
There's no I in team.
And, and, and a lobbyist, we, we, for a lobbyist for the city, that they have pushed down. Why? Because Dearborn's gotten $70 million for their Parks and Recreation, and we got the-
About $10 million.
Well, overall, they got $70 million.
That was for the city.
For the city, but we've got nothing. And I've always, and you can, you can ask the Director, 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 "How can we improve our parks? How can we improve our fields? How can we do better? We're working on it, we're looking to get grants." But now, that I'm hearing this recording and this text message, it kind of makes sense, like, and, and no disrespect to any parent out here, you know, the one thing about me is I'm very blunt on how I speak, is that he was just, he was pushing me away from the club. And as, and I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, it's called the APSC or CSC?
APAC.
AC.
And I don't think, I don't think they're 100% in this, right?
Are they a nonprofit, do you know, or?
I don't know.
They are, they've been around a long time.
Like I said, everything of this was public knowledge, right? Facebook is a world of knowledge these days.
Well, unfortunately-
And I got more than enough time to sit around and sleaze all over it.
Unfortunately, you know.
So, when you can go from one person and find out who they're involved with, with this person, and find out what that person's involved with, things start to make sense.
I want to hit something on the record, I had a conversation with the resident here who's part of the D7 Dads, involved, not a coach, and I want to make very clear on the record, and I even picked up the phone and called the individual. Hypo athletics does not want the D7 Dads Club.
Well, no, have you seen the fields?
But, well, hang on, I, I got, I got one even better for you. I said, "Hey, this is," he said, "Aren't they a nonprofit?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Get me in contact with somebody from the D7 Dads Club, I'm gonna donate $1,000 to the D7 Dads Club."
Beautiful.
He said, "Send me, connect me with somebody, and I'll even give it to them in writing as the CEO of Hype," he said, "I want nothing to do with the D7 Dads Club or their fields." So I just want to put that on the record, they want nothing to do with the D7 Dads Club, and no hype is not trying to take it. So wherever this is spinning, and Mo Badun's trying to give it to them, that's a pure lie. So please, if that's on one of your questions, cross that one off, too.
Nope, it's not.
Thank you.
Counsel Chair.
Yes.
I have a question of Mr. Z. In reading the materials, you said something about verifying the residency. There were at least 20 kids listed that lived outside the city. Are we paying for their shirts, or are they paying for their own shirts?
They're paying for their owns, I mean, we, we just give, well, we give the allotment to D7, and it, that's it, that's all we do, is give them the money. What happens, I can't say, you know, it's theirs.
All right, well, that was my question, why should the city residents pay for out-of-city children's clothing?
No, and that's why they have to have the cities, but as I stated, these are children.
I understand.
If I register my 13-year-old, how in the world are you gonna check his name versus address?
I agree, it shouldn't have been done.
It should just have his, his city, right?
I got a better idea. You know how you resolve all this? You give the D7 Dads Club a lump sum every year of a, of a, of this X number. Whatever the D7 Dads Club does with it, I mean, we know it's in Dearborn Heights, I mean, it seems like it's always around $3,200, $3,500. Give them the $3,500. I mean, I, you know, I spoke to some of the parents yesterday, that a lot of this money also goes to, you know, unprivileged individuals that can't afford it, and so-
Yes.
Some of the parents come out, and I think the city can, I think the city can easily do its part to give even up to $5,000. You can let the D7 Dads Club figure it out as a nonprofit, I think that's the end result. We don't want any of the information of everybody needing to pay off, and I think you can ultimately do this. I mean, the D7 Dads Club is different than many other organizations, they've been around before the city of Dearborn Heights has been around. I think this is the end-all, do-all, we don't want any kids' information, you allow Mr. Donie, I don't know his name-
Donie.
Donie to go ahead and, and figure it out, and continue to do it, and pass it on to those that continue to come, and the city knows, every year it's gonna give this X amount of dollars, they budget for it, and they move on.
So I know we signed this 10-year contract.
With who?
I know the mayor signed, when I say "we," I mean the mayor.
The mayor would have to bring it to City Council, by the way, guys. We've heard about it, but we've never seen it, and I want you to know how-
Right, so, that was gonna be my question, right? If it's a 10-year contract for the Dads Club to have first rights of these fields, and you guys are willing to support and give back to the city through D7 Dads Club, can we validate this 10-year contract?
We cannot validate it until it comes in, it has to be voted by the majority of the-
I understand, I'm asking when it does.
Yeah.
When it does, can we have your guys' promise that this will be validated?
Well, we'd have to look at the contract.
Validated with $5,000.
All we're asking is for first rights of the field. All we're asking on top of that is for the fields to be kept up.
I, I just also want you to keep in mind that we also want to review this document.
No, I get that.
I can't just blindly tell you here, yes, you can keep this, you know, I think every attorney, including Roger, will probably tell you, absolutely not. I'm sure Roger reviewed it, but never told us.
What I'm asking-
We need to put words in Roger's mouth, please.
What I'm asking is, is if there's an option to ensure that Dads Club gets these fields, that they've played on for 72 years. Why, why is that not in writing? Why is that not already a contract? And like you said, if it's as easy to help us out financially as an organization that literally does nothing but help kids, right? I've gone out with my own money, bought kids' baseball bats, cleats, helmets, because they need them, right? And that's, that's just as a parent. So if the city's willing to do that, all we're asking, jot it down.
You know what the problem here is? I'm gonna tell you for me. Today, and always, I, I, when I spoke to the individual, that I'm not gonna say the name publicly, but I told him, he gave me, you know, it's funny, and it's coming to light now, this was like four months ago, I got a phone call, and they said, "Hey, man, I know you're running for mayor, are you supporting the D7 Dads Club?" I said, "With or without me running for mayor, I'm gonna support the D7 Dads Club." And that's how, that's how the conversation ended. Then he said to me, "Well, I feel like there's an individual that's trying to, you know, jeopardize us," and I think I may have even reached out to the Director and said, "Hey, I'm hearing this information," and I think he like, solidified it, like, "No, none of that's true, like, we're not gonna go after the D7 Dads Club." What I can tell you is, get the, let the administration send over the contract over to the city, let us see what that contract is, because I can tell you right now, it's not a valid contract. Even though the mayor said he signed it, it's not validated until the executive sends it over to the check and balance of the Legislative Department. And so the Legislative will review that, and either say, "Well, I, yea, your name," and I don't think anybody here's gonna say no, but we want to make sure that what happens in ten years-
Well, that's what I want to make sure, nobody says no.
Yeah, well, I mean, we want to make sure that the, the, the verbiage in there-
And I understand that.
Is properly, like, what if, God forbid, somebody gets injured, but we give you guys the right, first right of refusal, we allow you guys to use it, but somebody gets injured and they sue the city? We don't know what that's like, we don't know what that thing says.
I understand.
So we have to make sure that we're protecting the city of Dearborn Heights, as well as looking out for the best interest of the children.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you.
Counsel Chair, if you don't mind, can you email that contract to us? There's, there's no record over in the city.
Me?
Yeah. Anybody have that contract?
Yeah. I mean, I'm just a single mom in the city, I don't have no contracts or nothing.
Wow, you guys don't have a contract?
I've actually asked for this contract, Counsel. Okay, please.
There you go.
Thank you.
Wow, everybody has a contract except for City Council?
I'd like a copy of it, too.
And the clerk has, by the way, she's the record keeper, just so you guys know.
We'll make sure we get it to her.
Get it to the clerk, and the clerk will just-
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Unbelievable.
So-
Nothing from the audience, sir, please.
Okay, no problem.
We do have a couple other questions that I kind of want to run through, there's a lot of parents that-
There's a parent also in the back, and we want to give him a moment as well.
Do you want to go?
Badun, sir, please state your name.
I'm Joe Donie, I've been coaching with D7 for over 10 years, I run the baseball and softball program. So, I want to address something, I want to make sure this is really listened to. We want to know what's going to happen for the families here, because this has strongly affected D7. We have lost three teams and a lot more players from other teams because of this whole incident. Like we've addressed here many times already, we've been around 72 years, there is no reason we should be in jeopardy of losing teams because of an issue like this. So I want to know, what are we going to do for these families? How are we gonna look after these families? Because all I'm hearing right now is a lot of pointing fingers, and gotta figure things out and stuff. So, what are we gonna do with that?
Joe, that's a great question. You know, I can tell you, what I think, I can tell you, financially, as a fiduciary, I think we don't need to receive you guys' information in the future, I think you guys are privileged to at least a minimum, like, a set number, $3,500, $4,000, I think it's easily budgeted for, I don't even, I think we can even raise it, please, nothing, sir, from the audience. I can tell you that that is our procedure as, as a legislative body. I want you to know, as the executive body, they have to come up with those procedures. Now, what I can tell you is, the right thing to do is reach out to our MMRA Attorney, see what they tell you, the right proper policies and procedures are being done, give that information to this body, because that's the right thing to do, and then they should be able to facilitate it to you. But what I can't come here and tell you is everything that you want to hear, which is, I know is not the answer that you guys want to hear. But there are, there are steps to this. And, look, I didn't, I requested the mayor to be at this meeting, not because we want to attack and fight, it's because, guys, at the end of the day, this is children's information, we just want to get to the bottom line. I don't know why the IT Director's not here, because I believe he was supposed to do the investigation. I know, I, I got a, a phone call from our chief, Chief, you there? We got, we got-
They're here, that's why they didn't come.
I, I got a call from our chief today, and, and he did tell me that him and the IT Director were investigating it, I don't know how far it's gotten. Yeah, he completed two interviews today. Can you step up to the mic? Huh? Step up to the mic, please.
I just want to talk more about the investigation, Counsel Chair.
Well, I just want to hear, I mean, I think the parents are rightfully deserved to know what's happening in this investigation, they didn't come here to just get-
Yeah, but that's not an answer to our question, our question was, what's gonna be done with the kids now?
Let's hear where this investigation-
I already spoke with the chief.
Oh.
But my question is-
Let him get up, let him say something.
My question is, is, these children's information is out there.
Right.
Right? You have three-year-olds whose addresses were posted on a public site. What are you going to do to protect those exact kids now?
Did you destroy the information that you pointed out?
It's not even the destroying the information, who downloaded it? Who has it, who saved it?
That's, that's what I want to hear from the chief, real quick.
So, we, we, we're almost done, we have one more interview tomorrow morning, we're gonna meet up with D7 tomorrow, myself, at the police station, along with the mayor, and then-
Is the Counsel gonna know about it?
About what?
This investigation?
Yeah. After we talk to D seven and the mayor's, you know, obviously, the mayor's going to have the last say. Turn it over to you guys, or you guys can ask me. But, uh, Cheryl and the Parks Director today were interviewed. We have one more person tomorrow.
Council chair. Okay, I have a question. Was the IT director able to download those IP addresses that downloaded this document?
That's, we're being, that's going to be a difficult task, but we're working on it.
It's possible.
Possible, right?
Yeah.
It is possible. You can not exactly download-
Yeah, you can, I, any documentation can doc, can tell you, this IP address downloaded this. And then at least that way you can trace to see who, maybe there was only two people that downloaded it. At least that gives a little bit of sense of, of relief to, to some of these residents.
Yeah.
Against some of these parents here. Just give me one second. Is IT director Cooper on here? How is he not here?
Council chair.
Go ahead.
So honestly, I know this falls, again, at administrative, uh, executive office, but my recommendations would be this. Send out a letter to every single parent that was affected on those addresses. And we also give these people credit reporting, monitoring, at least the next year, to know if anybody's trying to use anybody's information, or-
You don't have a social security number covered?
It doesn't, you really don't need a social security these days to do anything to harm people's, uh, information. Well, I, exactly. You don't need a social security. You can monitor people, and I mean, it's the city's job and the state, but I mean, there's a, there's a process that's got to go. Telling them that there's just an investigation, I understand that investigations are going to be good and finished, but what, their, their question is valid. What is, what's the city going to do? I think first, we send out a notice to every single parent of a child that was on that. Sir, please. Please.
Hey, I got it. Let me, I'll, I'll do that.
Send out a, send out a letter to every single parent whose child was affected, to start off with. Tell them of, of the breach. Secondly, uh, provide monitoring information. If any, any individuals' information's been used on the web, anything's been opened in individuals' names. And, you know, you can lock people's information nowadays online too, you know, through the, the three credit units. You know, just steps to take, to start off. And then again, I, I truly believe we should reach out to MMRMA and get their guidance too, just to get a second opinion outside of the cities. Because again, I would like any investigation done to be done outside of the city, not in general.
So my thing too here is also, um, with that being said, what you're offering, all that, uh, how do we justify the parents that are now scared, the kids that have been taken out of the program? Now our program is hurt by this. So how are we going to just, like, how, how do we make people feel comfortable for this now? Like, how, going forward?
I think we need to start with IT and find out exactly how many people actually downloaded it.
Okay, I understand. I'm saying-
And then we can go target them.
In the future, in the future, though, going into, we're supposed to have flag football. We're supposed to have the spring season baseball. We have fall baseball right now. We have all these sports. Who's going to say that this doesn't hurt us from getting our registrations now because people are just simply scared?
Like I said, I think if we put their mind at ease, we find out only three people downloaded it and they're asking parents, that may be different. If you find somebody outside the city, then that's something to be alarmed about. Let's start with that.
It's almost like the damage is already done, though, right? The parents are already scared. And I don't think I need credit monitoring for my 13-year-old. He does not have established credit. And if he does, we have a bigger problem.
Let's go to councilman, councilman, council, who's also got legislative, you know, experience and, you know, and-
Yeah, I, I, I think, number one, we tell the parents, it's not going to happen again. The, you've got the director of recreation here. There's going to be safeguards put in place. We don't need, uh, dates of birth, or even really, uh, addresses on our, on our agenda. We just need to know the allotments. So assure them it won't happen again. Uh, uh, as far as what the remedy is, again, if, if there's a breach of people's social security number, adults, credit monitoring may be appropriate. That's not the appropriate situation here. But that, that's for us to discuss and quickly come up with. What's the, what's the remedy for the dads club?
But I feel like that should have already been in discussion. This has been an issue for a week and a half, and our kids have been unprotected. We don't know who has their address. There's three-year-olds that can't play in their front yard.
By the way, I just want you to know, the IT director came in Monday?
No, I understand all of that. Right? I do understand. But the IT director is not going to protect our kids. Okay? What about the parents that have escaped a domestic abuse, abuse situation?
So, Sarah, let me-
That are hiding. What are we going to do to protect those kind of people?
Yeah. So let me tell you, I think the, really the relief and the answer to make everybody to understand is to actually determine how many IP addresses actually downloaded the packet. I think when you get that actual info, information, and if it comes back and tells you 100 people downloaded it, that's very scary. That's very alarming.
Right. So what are we going to do?
And, and-
Even if it was one strange person?
Well, let's just say it's two people and we-
Okay.
And then we, and it traces it back to the La Pointe. It was downloaded twice. Well, then we know what's still at points in the conversation from the police department. And, and the, the D sevens can happen with La Pointe.
Okay, but here's my thing. And, and this was stated at our meeting. Okay? You got one download, right? I download it. I email it to every person here. Now who has it?
That we don't know. You're absolutely correct.
The problem is, the damage is already done.
Yeah.
It's just not that easy. You guys, you guys keep saying download, downloads. If someone downloads something, you have to search for about IP address. So it's just not that, that easy.
If I screenshot something, you don't know where it came from.
And it isn't a matter of me just order three people downloading and then all of a sudden their names pop up. It doesn't operate like that.
No, you-
IP address. You have to get a search warrant from a judge. Who comes to even say a judge is even going to give us a search warrant for that?
I think it would be a search warrant when it comes to kids.
This is, this has become a huge issue for these families, all because one person had it out for the fields. That's insane. And what's even more insane is that they cross that red line when they put our kids in danger. So what are we going to do for the families right now that can't let their kids play in their front yard in the middle of the summer because they're scared?
I, I got a question. What do you think is the right thing to do?
Well, for starters, they finally started taking police reports, which was a huge issue because those kind of people have to have things documented on paper, right? But what else are we going to do? That's, I'm, I'm the mom. I'm the victim in this situation. I should not be the one coming up with the answer for the city's mistake.
Did the mayor tell you what he was going to do?
Same answer as you guys. We're looking into it. We're looking into it. That's not helping our kids right now.
And by the way, I want you to agree, I agree with you. What I'm trying to think of, what is the right thing to do? So if you have some type of thing that you want done, tell us so we know.
Right.
Yeah, every person that is at risk, for me personally, like I said, my kid's 13. He's probably not even at home. Nobody knows, right? He's out gallivanting. But those people that are scared, how often have we had patrolers go past those houses? Specifically?
Not at all.
So nothing's being done.
Why don't you get us a list of names and maybe we can have, you know, once a week, somebody patrol those homes to make sure it brings some ease?
But that's, the list of names is available. Right? We've, we've made reports. They know. This, they've known since Saturday. It's now Tuesday, and not a single patrol vehicle has driven past their houses to make sure that these kids are safe?
We have over 300 kids.
300 kids.
I got a question. How many parents actually requested it, that we know of, to the police department, officially?
I, I don't work for the police department.
But how many parents requested?
We haven't had a single parent come up to us and say, I'm the woman that's involved in domestic violence abuse. I need to be relocated because you guys messed up. Now, one person has come up to us.
Speaking to them like this?
It's, it's, I mean, it's not realistic. We're, we're a police department that has 40 police officers, and we patrol the city of Dearborn Heights. We can't drive by 300 parents' house and make sure that, 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 that it's, they're, they're good. It's just not going to work like that.
I don't think she's saying three of her kids.
I'm saying how many specifically requested, because they know they have a unique issue.
We haven't had one.
Okay. And also too, what, what do we need to do to make you happy? What do we need to do to make you happy? What are you looking for?
The plan was, when we meet up tomorrow with the D seven, then at that point, we were going to try to obtain the names and provide some type of special attention or some type of assistance. But right now, sitting here, right now, we have nobody. We have a list of kids' names, and we have addresses. We don't have no one that's come to us and said, hey, our kid is being stalked on the internet. Hey, I'm involved in domestic violence abuse, and my husband now knows where I live at, and he's knocking on my door because of you guys. We don't have that. You know, all we are is talking about what can happen and what might happen. And at, at the end of the day, we have to sit down as a group and figure out how we can serve the D seven club. And that's the reason why I'm here, and that's the reason why we plan on meeting with them tomorrow.
Well, like I said, what can we do to make you happy at this point? What are you looking for?
So that's why we brought this here today. First of all, after we had to write a petition and contact three news outlets, we finally got added to the petition after we were told that it would never happen. Um-
By who?
Mr. Wenzel was at our Tuesday meeting. He told us that we would each get two minutes and that we would not be added to the agenda.
No way.
No, no, no.
That was recorded.
No, I said, everything in my power. I said, everything in my power.
Yes, you did. You said you would do everything in your power, but it's probably not going to happen, so you'll get two minutes.
Well, he doesn't have the power to, to grant any more than two minutes.
I understand that.
That's the council chair. He did that for us.
I understand that, which is why I asked.
During the meeting, I text-
I'm sorry. Did the middle of my sentence interrupt the beginning of yours again?
Request to have a meeting. Didn't I have, didn't I do that? I text you during that meeting on Tuesday. I text him.
So I don't see what the middle is.
And I said, can you add this to the agenda on Tuesday?
I, I will, yeah, he did. And I will tell you that the clerk actually was, and I'm going to give her the kudos to this. She said, we definitely need to give these parents a time and day, and we should not put a two-minute restriction. You should allow, and so I took the recommendation of our clerk, and I said, Madam Clerk, I wholeheartedly agree. And Sarah, I also want you to know, you did email all of us. Every single person received your email in spam. And thanks to you saying-
Did my email go to your spam today?
No, 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 no.
No, I'm sorry, because I sent his email today the same exact way I sent everyone else's the other day.
No, no, but I think what happened was, and I, and I got this from our, our IT, that when you put all the emails in one and you sent it with, with a bunch of different outside emails, what happens is it automatically went to spam, assuming it was spam. My, my, I'm not lying to you. It went to spam. And, you know, thanks to you saying something that, hey, no, I didn't email you and checking my spam, I ended up finding 20 different emails from other residents, and I'm like, oh my God, I had no idea.
So our residents are going unanswered like that because of a spam filter?
Hundred percent. And I had no idea.
Wow. I even checked my spam filter at work, and I just build cars.
I want to add something real quick.
Go ahead, Jess.
You can choose to stand?
What's-
I did.
Open it up.
Yeah. So the moral of the story right now is, we have two huge issues. Not only are these kids' information out here in a very dangerous matter, but now, an organization that's been around for 72 years, how do, how do we allow these parents to feel safe continuing bringing their kids back here? Right? So we're an organization right now where parents are asking, or telling us, we don't feel safe with our kids in, in, in the program.
Council chair.
I'm going to go to Councilman Sabre. I'm just going to tell you, Joe, respectfully, we're the legislative body. Our, our role is, like, I can tell you, like, me giving you the idea of saying, we're going to give a lump sum instead of hearing you guys' information. And, and that's not a buy. That's me saying that you can go to the parents and say, hey, we worked something out with the city. You can still come in, you can be participate, you're still going to get whatever the, the amount that you're, you're receiving. And the city's no longer going to request to make, give some type of relief to them. And then they're also looking to potentially see, uh, the IP address if we can get a warrant, which I gratefully believe we should. But I'm going to go to Councilman Sabre. He'll yield my time.
So my question is to, I'm sorry, your last name was Mr.?
Doni.
Doni. Uh, my thing is to you, to anybody coming, that there's going to be process procedures, registration. And I believe all registration, everything should be done electronically.
I think the problem is, is people aren't coming to register.
So-
They've seen everything that's happened.
I mean, I mean, I don't know what the registration process is. Is it done?
It's literally a click.
On a table? Is it online? Is it a net?
So we have open registration at the Red Center.
And I'm sorry, if you can explain the process, that I can understand.
Yeah.
Because I don't know if you're sitting there filling up a piece of paper, registering somebody, or it's online, electronically. Does the city get that application, their registration at the same time? So-
The city does not get our registrations. We get our registrations. We get paper forms that are filled out at the Richard A. Young Center, and we also have an online website for them to go to and fill out registrations. That is our registration process. That's all they have to do with that. All the registration information is not shared with the, the city that comes to us as the organization, as it has for 72 years. So what-
So that's a great, I'm, I'm going to cut you off as, as you answer the questions. Um, the one thing that the city can do with the D seven club is, on our website, with the IT department, is have a page link. Anybody that's a Dearborn Heights resident can register where the city gets that information encrypted, saved, which is automatically sent back to a total of what we get. Nobody sees that information. The dads club gets that information. Again, the IT department, like, just we have links to everything else on the city's website. I don't know why we don't have a link to register Dearborn Heights children on the city's website. It makes no sense why, and it should be encrypted. Nobody sees that information. That way, you don't got to send us anything to verify. It's already sent to us. It's already in the system. And it allocates a total by itself without anybody, even if it's a director. The, the director doesn't need to see that information, to be honest with you.
But on that note, though, sir, sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're good.
If we do it that way, let's say you put the link on there. The city is now getting that information that was just leaked. After we just, he just had got done saying-
No. And again, what I'm saying is, it's encrypted. The city's not getting it.
So you're saying, put our website link in your page?
Link, but it's encrypted. Nobody sees that information.
Only you guys see it.
See it, but we get the registration information that's, that Joe's a Dearborn Heights resident, and this is what we owe. It's encrypted. Nobody sees that information. We see your name as Joe Doe. You know, we don't need to see your address. The director doesn't need to see your address.
So what I would worry about with that is, for, since the beginning of Facebook, D seven's been using Facebook to advertise, and they've been using the same website.
Which is, which, which is totally fine. I just, that when we incorporate it into our website, our website goes through multiple, uh, multiple levels of security on the city's website.
Right, but I'm saying, like, people that already know how to register, right, which there only might be a few of us left, the people that do know how to register are going straight to the D seven dads' club website.
Again, which there will be a link directed to the ci, it'll take you to the-
So are you seeing a link from the dads' club site?
Yes.
To the city?
For me, because you guys have stuff.
Absolutely. I think all we're asking for right now, because the D seven's registration is perfect, right? I've been doing it for eight years for my son and years before for me.
And I'm fine with that. But I'm saying the way we receive the information is not perfect. Do you agree with me on that one? We obviously dropped the ball.
No, and I think we've already put practices, spoke about putting practices in place to alleviate that issue again, especially for D seven, right?
But what I'm saying is, for, for children that are Dearborn Heights residents, that we are regis, that are registering for the D seven club, yes, your process for you is perfect. For us to receive that information on a link that's on the city's website-
Right, but we haven't had a problem with-
Why does the city need more information when they already were leaked?
No, no, no.
We're not getting-
What I'm saying is, is we've been fine. This is the only year we've had this issue, and I think we figured out what the issue is, right? So we don't need to change anything about our registration. But I think one thing that we do need help with is advertisement for the dads' club right now, because they have, people are leaving.
We need, we need everyone to understand that this hadn't, the dads' club had no part in this. The leak, any of that stuff. Okay? That's, that's my main thing here, is these kids are scared, but dads' club for 72 years, and I coach a lot of these kids too, this is their safe place, and now it is not because of this. And I understand there's steps that need to be taken. You guys got a plan in place, whatever you're saying with this stuff, yes. But we have a program now that could possibly be in jeopardy before, because of this, right? So with things being said on social media or anything like that, arguments between city officials on social media, any of that stuff too, it's got to be addressed. That, I mean, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Let me ask you, I, I want to answer something to Sarah, if I may, and then I'm going to go listen to back. Guys, nothing from the audience, please. If you want to speak, you can speak outside of the chambers. Uh, you're saying, or is it maybe it was you, Joe, you're saying you need help marketing?
None of it. No, we just need to get the kids back.
They need to feel safe. I'd like to hear from you. Yeah, ma'am.
I just want to, um, just first of all, say-
Grab the mic and, and put it towards you. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Tina Doni. Yes, there's a lot of Donis here, because we do a lot of work for dads' club. Um, so I, what I first of all want to say is, I feel for all these parents, because I'm going to speak as a mother too. My main concern, and we can sit here and go on and on, back and forth on whose fault it was, and who's this, is clerical error, whatever, the main issue is our kids. I can't stand this. I don't like any of this. None of us do, but we have it here, so we have to resolve it. So I'm proposing that first and foremost, as a mother, I don't care if I've been through domestic this and that, that's horrible. I don't even want to think about that. But as a family, as, as the mother of five kids, I may not go to the police station because I may be scared. I may not want to come up here. I'm not a public speaker, and believe me, I'm not. I don't like this. But if someone from the city reached out to me, whether it's by a phone call, or a knock on the door and said, you know, to each family that was affected, each family's name is on there, hey, what is your concerns? Are you scared? Do you feel comfortable? I don't care if one person got that out there. Are you comfortable? Let's show responsibility. Social media is horrible. And take accountability. Social media has tore relationships up with this, has tore family up with this, has stressed people out. I have never seen so much politics just to do something for our kids. So what I propose also is that these families be contacted, not by a letter. I'm not going to read a letter. I want to hear, I want to feel comfortable. They may not, they just need that. And then to speak on, I didn't want to make this about dads' club. This is not about dads' club, but this is going to keep going on and on. So I want to just say on behalf of the board, maybe a public announcement, a statement, once this is resolved, and hopefully it's resolved soon. I don't care who it was. I'm a secretary. I make mistakes. Okay? But if it was intentional, that needs to be, that needs to be done. So either way, at this point, a public announcement or a statement apology from the city, and to let them know, and this is publicly, to let them know, not just that dad could have had no involvement, but to let them know, this will never happen again. Not just for dads' club. This is for the Raiders. This is for Northern Dearborn Heights. This is for Garden City. This is for every kid, because enough is enough. These kids are being trafficked, one from Vista Marie, anywhere. It doesn't have to be a pedophile now. They can become a pedophile. Maybe they didn't download this. Who cares? It's still out there. I wouldn't want my information, let alone one of my child or grandchildren. So with that being said, let's just get to the point here. Let's fix it.
Thank you.
And then I want to add one more thing before I sit down. We're all pointing fingers. We're all, we're all looking for someone to blame. But at the end of the day, we're all in front of you guys right now. You work for the city. Whether you're at fault for anything or not, there's still, still should be accountability taken, and that's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
My name's Janine McKay. I want to apologize to my daughter, because I told her I wouldn't do this. So my grandson is-
I'll tell her I put you up to it.
No. Is one of the students, or one of the players that has their name released. Okay? We haven't heard in over a week that he was put out there, his information was put out there. He's riding a bike up and down the street, all over the place, doing whatever he does. We had no idea that we really need to keep an extra eye on him at this point, because we don't know who has seen this information. They're out there looking for him. The whole time we've ever asked for anything on this, "Oh, we'll figure it out. We'll, we'll, we'll get back to you." That's not the problem. The problem is now, who's standing in our bushes? Who's standing at a school? Who's standing at Dearborn Seven watching these kids that you put a target on now? That would never have had a target on their back? Now, as for my grandson, he's autistic. He is high-functioning autistic, but one of the problems he has is he doesn't understand stranger danger or danger, period. So, now you just put a target on your back, and every time we speak out on this, again, he is getting another target put on his back, saying, "Hey, here we go. Here's somebody, this kid, that's not being watched properly." And then the first thing you're gonna say is, "The parent's fault, because they didn't watch them." And as for calling the police and asking them for help, what am I supposed to say? My grandson's out riding his bike, and he's got a target on his back, but it's not like one that you can see, but we don't know who's out there watching him. So that's what I'm asking you, is let us know what you guys found in your investigation, that where that information went, who's got a hold of it, and how are you gonna stop that from being leaked again? Because once you put it out there, I don't care how much you redact it, how much you take it off, it's still out there. And the people that we need to worry about are the ones that are gonna get that information right back up again. So these 300 kids, now all have targets on their back. And the parents have to worry. And that's not fair. And you guys are all worried about who did what, who did that, but you're not worried about the kids. So, that's my problem, and I'm tired of fighting and talking.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Janine.
And I also wanted to be on the record that it is not just Dearborn Heights kids' information that was put out there. You have kids from Taylor, Allen Park. You have kids that come to this organization from all over the place, because it's affordable, it's family-friendly, and the kids love it.
So, I'm sorry-
Let her finish.
To her answer about other kids, but I thought the list was Dearborn Heights residents only.
No, the entire list was provided so that they could see who was from Dearborn Heights. And pull those kids out. And pay specifically per child from Dearborn Heights. But that's a bigger issue, that this city has put other cities' children at risk. And I really feel like if there's an investigation that needs to be done, Allen Park, Taylor, Lincoln Park, come on.
I truly believe MSP should be investigated.
Absolutely. And I did ask that when we had the meeting with the mayor, did I not? I asked if we could have Michigan State Police investigate and- The issue that I was told was that they won't, because it's not a criminal offense.
Not a criminal offense. You guys gotta stop with all that, Ben. That we are not competent in investigating our own.
We are. Nothing to do about the police department being competent.
So my issue is, though, is Cheryl's ex-husband is on the police force, is he not?
I don't think so.
What's his name?
No, don't put no names out there.
There's no corruption amongst our police department. We're competent and capable of handling our own investigation. Even though it's not a police matter. Okay? It's got something to do with City Hall, and it's a mistake on the comptroller side, along with, there's, there's numerous people who made mistakes.
Are you saying that you know whose mistake it's on?
It's, it's on everybody.
That's not what he's saying.
It's on everybody. It's not on the police department. So we're capable of hand, handling this investigation with integrity, without taking sides, and saying, "Well, we know this guy, we have to help him."
I, I wanna wrap this up.
We're not doing-
It's in the jurisdiction of the Dearborn Heights.
It is.
Okay, I, I just wanna wrap this up. Sarah, I'm gonna tell you, it seems like the police chief said that by tomorrow, you guys will be contacted regarding the investigation. I could tell you that the city council has a right for oversight. City council's recommendation, I would tell you, uh, the three recommendations I would make. One, and I, I, I respect the police chief, but I would disagree with him on this. I say, does should go out to an outside, uh, police force, because it's not just Dearborn Heights, now that I'm hearing. Seems like there's other cities. So, so, so maybe MSP should be the one. Number two, you guys need to put together some type of lump sum money that says, and this is not a buyout, this is saying, "We don't want your information. We don't," like the gentleman said back here, "we don't need to take in more information. I don't want nothing on a website."
Yeah, it's been 72 years we've been kinda faithful.
I think you just give out, you know, the, the, you know, a lump sum, four, $5,000. Here you go, let these kids. And that can, I think, allow the parents to feel like, "All right, you know, we, we don't want anymore, and there's no more information given out." And then two, maybe at this, maybe at these games, we can request for the first next year, or for the end of the season, to say, "Allow a police officer to be present."
Yeah, and I spoke with the chief on that. Um, a- all it requires is an email ahead of time, so that will be, be, being done.
So maybe we can, we can allow some type of police presence to bring the safety and, and for the parents. I mean, look, I, I swear, I'm so sorry that this happened.
No, and it's not your fault. Obviously, we figured out who is at fault.
On behalf of the city, we're sorry, because it's an, you know, as a, as a city of Dearborn Heights as a whole, we're sorry to the parents, we're sorry to the children. It's unfair.
So for my last question, what are we going to do towards the person that intentionally put this information out there?
Well, that's, that's- Well, well, that goes on the mayor and the police chief. And I think you have to hear, wait, and see what their investigation comes out, because, you know, you're giving us an individual, and until it's been thoroughly investigated by the police chief-
Well, that's the thing, they, they investigated her today.
Well, yeah.
She laughed about it afterwards, all through City Hall.
Really?
So, that, that's my problem.
How do you know that?
I know things. Am I wrong? Tell me, am I wrong? Anybody that saw that today, am I wrong?
I honestly, I didn't even know she was, anybody was investigated today.
She wasn't at City Hall, she was at the police department.
She came here afterwards. I do.
Guys, now, again, now, now, I will say, uh- Yeah, because thirty, thirty years of, of being-
You don't have to move, I mean, just, okay. I have a suggestion, in terms of a motion, maybe?
Speaking to the mic?
Sure, sorry. The mic is a little down for, uh, for me. Um, suggestion would be that you adopt a motion to, uh, first of all, uh, direct the city's administration to expeditiously give whatever notice needs to be given, both informally to the affected individuals, as well as may be required uh, under state law, as referred to by Mr. LaPointe, Chris LaPointe, in his public comment. Two, that you direct the administration to immediately, if they have not otherwise done so, contact MMRMA for additional assistance and advice with respect to this matter. Three, that you strongly advise the administration to turn this matter over for outside investigation by the Michigan State Police, to give an independent review of this matter. And that you, I think finally, uh, that you suggest to the, or, or direct the administration to provide you any details with respect to any investigation forthwith. And then, uh, that the city council will commit to reconvene and review this matter in the future, to ensure that it is actually followed up on by the administration, as directed by the council.
What about a policy in place?
Council chair, if I may. Council chair.
I will give you, just give me one second, please, sir.
Please, thank you.
What about some type of policy in place also?
Uh, yes, uh, you know, look, there should be a policy, there could actually be an ordinance with respect to this matter. Uh, the difficulty is that when this body, hence why I am here, has sometimes directed, that things end up being taken care of, but as terms of policies, they haven't been done quickly. Uh, you could direct me to try to come up with something, if you felt that that would make things more expeditious. I will come up with something, or you could direct to the administration to end up having something done. But it needs to be done forthwith.
Thank you.
Yes, council chair, I'm gonna put an objection to Mr. Miyaki violating his oath- and giving advice to the, uh, the council. But this, um, what came out tonight is names and allegations that could possibly be a criminal activity, and I would wait until the investigation is completed. I'm, I'm grateful there is an investigation. It's already started and in place, and there's a resolution time. Now, what Mr. Miyaki is advising is for you to act on information without a complete picture of what's going on. Today, things were said, and it needs to be addressed. We can't ignore it, because it's on public record. So when you have a former, a fired, uh, and what was his name, is Miyaki coming in as and giving advice to the council, that's contrary to what I'm gonna give as the corporation counsel, whether you choose to follow it or not. Is, let's wait till the investigation finishes, and then we take actions to deal with this. We already will notify MMRMA, if they have, I think they've already been notified, until we can figure out, what are we asking them to do? Okay? Let's see if there's something, if there's, if there is an employee, or there are employees that did this deliberately, that raises a question internally of how we're gonna act and what actions we're gonna take to proceed. Now, you don't wanna slander somebody, and you don't wanna accuse somebody of something that's, you have no evidence to support any of this except a resident coming forward. Now, if you start doing what Ms. Miyaki is saying, is you're putting an employee to try and possibly countersue us on what happened tonight, and saying that this was a vehicle to attack this person. Now, if there are people in the, in the, in the community that's involved in this, that may have to be looked at. If this was deliberate and malicious, which what was said. And you have an employee's rights that are being violated, and Ms. Miyaki standing up there does not protect the employee, or what was said, that has to now be addressed by our police chief.
Thank you. I just wanna say, Mr., go ahead. Mr. Miyaki didn't give a name. Mr. Miyaki's actually speaking as a resident. I asked, he asked me today, and I said, "You can come in as a resident, you're coming in." This is a Dearborn Heights resident speaking.
He's not. He's saying it as accounts, as a legal advice, and he's giving legal advice to specifically do resolutions and motions. That is legal advice.
I'm not expecting to get any pay, because the administration refused.
Pay is not an indication of whether you're getting and giving advice or not.
Former corporation counsel to just, do you want?
Know that. You're a fired formal counsel.
I'm gonna, I'm going to go to, uh, Councilman Conson next. Come on, guys, come on.
But council chair, if-
Hang on, I'm gonna go to Councilman Conson. Guys, this is about the children, the parents, this isn't about everybody going back and forth today.
I have an employee.
Thank you. Go ahead, counsel.
Well, let, let's let the, the Dearborn Heights police investigate and report to us what, what's happened. I'm afraid that if this was sent to this, you know, I've been involved with, with sports teams, and Dads Club, and wrestling teams. This kind of stuff happens over and over again. When someone asked me to, an attorney from Allen Park, who was active, and to file a lawsuit on behalf of an aggrieved group. And what we wanna do is, we wanna come up with a data breach policy. We wanna figure out what the remedy is. We wanna work with our recreation director, with our city clerk and others to make sure this doesn't happen again. And we wanna let people know you're, you're, you're safe enrolling your kids in the D7 Dads Club baseball. Your, your information is gonna be protected. And as I said, for one thing, we don't need the, the, the personal data. We don't need it to come all the way through. So, I heard our new recreation director say he's, he's gonna make sure that, uh, there are procedures in force, that it doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Council chair?
I'm gonna go to, uh, Gary, the resident, and then I'm gonna go to you.
Yeah, the only, the, the, the reason I was suggesting this is because it sounds like the residents are dissatisfied with what has been taking place and the information that has been provided. That was the recommendation with regard to the motion, and nothing that I ended up saying would in other, in any way cause jeopardy or legal exposure to the, to the city. So it's just my suggestion, but I don't think that it would harm anything, and I think it would help these parents in terms of, you know, having a certain level of comfort. I mean, you know, again, yeah, I mean, if, if, if I was in their, their shoes, you know, I could have been years ago if this had happened, I would have expected these types of things to be taken and done by the city, just like, you know, like I'm, I'm suggesting at this time.
Thank you.
So, council chair, if you don't need me, I will take my leave and, uh, actually have some dinner, so.
Thank you. Enjoy your dinner.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Conson.
Council chair, I truly think this investigation goes beyond just one or two city employees. I mean, you're saying might be elected officials involved and other parties from outside cities involved deliberately or intentionally, and that's why I truly believe that an internal investigation is not the right, in the right direction to go. And I mean, as much as that we gotta do to protect the kids and everything, we gotta get to the bottom of this was leaked intentionally, and there's some kind of profit behind it, or some kind of malicious thing going on behind it, should be, everybody should be investigated. From the person that submitted this information, to the people that might be involved in it. Plain and simple, honestly.
This is what I will say to the parents. Tomorrow, according to the chief, you said tomorrow, right? Tomorrow, you guys are gonna be hearing of this investigation. If you're not satisfied, call me. Email me, actually. And I will call, and I will get together a resolution to send this out to be an out, just don't let it go to my junk. Well, I took you out of my junk, I promise you. But, and if you're not satisfied, I can tell you as your council chairman, I will put together a resolution to this body, submit it to the Michigan State Police for, for an internal, for an outside investigation. You have my word on that. If you're not satisfied with, with how you feel the internal investigation took place, with the results, reach out to me. Thank you. I'm gonna give one more here, and then, and then we're gonna go move on from this, uh, thing.
Good afternoon, Hassan Young. Well, when you guys post about children's address with intent to harass under Michigan MCL it's a crime. It's a felony. So, whoever intentionally did this will be criminalized for a felony charge. So, every kid's name that was posted on the internet, that's 300 felonies. Very simple. It's not a joke. You know, this is intent to harass little children by putting their names, addresses out here. Look on, look at the MCL, Roger. MCL 750411S. And tell me what that is.
If you're talking to me and you're asking me the law, what are you trying to say? Do we have the right to prosecute? That depends on the charges and the facts.
Okay, but-
If the facts lead that way, sir, then it will be addressed. Absolutely. Don't, don't disparage my ability to read the law. I've been a prosecutor for 38 years.
Please, Roger.
If you wanna go ahead and bring something up, you make sure you have your facts straight before you come looking to me, in my direction, okay? Thank you.
Hey, let's, let's all control our emotions here. This isn't about whose challenges, whose integrity. Hang on, sir. Hang on, please. All I'm asking is, please go through the chair.
Absolutely.
Please go through the chair. You didn't go through the chair, and I know you wanna get out, you wanna get it out. I've not stopped you from speaking. I've given you the privilege to speak every time you've asked.
We have a right to speak, council chair, as this is part, the city corporation council is part of the charter.
That's all I'm asking. You're nice.
But before we're attacked, we have to retaliate and take exactly what's going on this way, to take the actions and turn it around, and as we're attacking. Okay? If you wanna help the kids, show it. You just pop in here to fight. That's all you do.
I'm not here to fight.
You are. That's all you do.
Roger.
That's all you do. That's all you do.
Mr. Owen, I'm gonna have to ask-
You big a big mouth, and you come in here and fight.
I'm gonna have to ask you to leave if you continue to do this. Roger, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave if you continue to do this.
No, no, you don't have to ask me to leave. I'm gonna keep quiet. Go ahead.
Please and thank you. Please and thank you. Go through the council chair, do not refer to Roger. You can ask me, and I'll refer to Roger.
Okay. Well, the problem is, my name wasn't out there. Your name wasn't out there. Kid's name was out there. They're saying, they're saying there's Taylor, there's, uh, Garden City. So, are, is the Garden City notified of these felonies in progress? 'Cause now we got a felony in progress, because this is harassment for children. So we don't, we don't know if Taylor knows about it. We don't know if Garden City knows about it. We don't know anybody knows about it. This has to be referred to the Michigan State Police.
Chief, did we refer this to any of the other police departments?
They're vetting.
Thanks to Mr. Owen for, for, for that recommendation.
No, but listen, it, there is, it's, it's a felony in progress. 300 felonies charges, because of every kid that was mentioned in their, it's a charge. It's like right now, I go commit five felonies. Five different times. Five different events. Or I go into the store, uh, uh, keep going in and out. Every time you walk in, you walk out, it's a felony. There's 300 kids, it's 300 felonies. Okay? That's, that's the problem that the people are not understanding. They're, they're saying, they're saying that, what's it called? No, the, the, this was intentionally done to harass. This is not. Because there's no way somebody's gonna put kids' addresses out here. You guys have been doing this for a long time. All of a sudden, it's election season, and now we're getting this to attack and harm people that are running for office. This is wrong. To put kids into this, it's very wrong. And people are not understanding this. This is not about me. This is not about you. It's about little children being attacked by pedophiles. How, how do we know a pedophile didn't go, go through and got the information? See, that's what you guys, I guess, are not understanding here. And I'm not blaming you, Moby Doon. I'm blaming the administration that, that, that is not here. Bill Bezzie did not show up for this, 'cause he don't care about the children. He don't care about you. He cares about his pockets. Excuse me, I'm talking, I'm-
Point of order. Take that back and don't talk like that, please.
Mr. Baydoin, the guy's not here. Let's be honest with each other. Come on, man.
This, this, we're not politics.
I'm not talking about politics. If he was, if he was here and he cared about the children, he should have been here.
Mr. Owen, thank you so much. I want you to know, the mayor didn't want to come here. He was invited. He had his own meeting with them. Only thing I will say...
What about other people? Did they see him?
It's on the Internet. They can go see the video. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Are you speaking as a resident?
Yes, I am. I'm Tom Wensel, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights.
Okay.
Parent of a Dads Club flag football player. There was accusations about people speaking statements, don't do any finger pointing, but there's a lot of finger pointing going on here tonight, specifically my name being mentioned by certain people. And that's finger pointing. And they say don't do finger pointing. There was a text message that I texted someone there in the Dads Club, high-ranking member of the Dads Club. He came to me and he said, "Tom, I need your help." He says, "A certain person that was mentioned," I'm not going to mention her name, "is trying to come into Dearborn Heights and take the fields. Please help us." And I said, "Okay." I hung up the phone with him. I immediately called the Superintendent of D7 Schools. I stated that how important the Dads Club is, how long they've been around, because he was kind of new, and that they have these fields and they should have first priority to the fields. And after a lengthy conversation, he didn't realize what was going on. And he said, "Okay, Tom, thank you for calling me." Then I hung up the phone and I called the Parks and Recreation Director, a different one than we have right now. I told her the same thing. I said, "We can't let someone else come in and take the Dads Club's fields." So they were using that against me, that I was helping the Dads Club, the statement that this lady made. Actually, they came to me and asked for help, right? And there's only one person up here whose name, or there's two, and mine was one of them several times, even by some City Council members. And there was text messages between me and someone else that were leaked, I don't know by who, several of them. An illegal recording that is shared illegally. And, you know, what I... At the meeting they had Thursday night, I didn't find out about this until Wednesday, last Wednesday. Thursday night, I went to the meeting, only representative from the city there. And I got chastised for it. I said, "We have to have this on the agenda." I stood up and I was only there as a parent. And I was asked not to come there as a City Councilman. But then the President said, "Tom, he's a City Councilman. Do you want to talk?" And I said, "Well, only because you said so." I said, I explained the procedure about City Council meetings and getting things on the agenda. And I said, "The agenda has, you have to put it on Tuesday." I said, "It's already Thursday." He said, "It's our good chance that you'll get it on." I said, "But I will do everything in my power to get this on the agenda for Tuesday's special meeting." I sat down. I texted Moby Doon. I said, "Moe, I'm at this meeting right now at Dads Club. We need to get this on the agenda at the meeting." So I don't know what I did wrong. Apparently, people are jealous. I don't know. I mean, but I did nothing wrong. And I'm getting... Councilman Saab is angry at me because of something. He hasn't approached me yet about it. I did, I mean, I'm taking a big blunt for no reason whatsoever. I'm the goat here, the whipping post. And people are just, because you know what? Because they can't find anyone else to blame. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Barb here and then I'm going to wrap this up and we will thank the parents. Go ahead, Barb.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know, my name is Barbara. I live in the south end of Dearborn Heights. I downloaded the packet on Thursday night, as I always do, at 7:00 PM. I have it on my PDF file. My computer shows that I'm in another state. But I would like to address the fact to, I believe her name is Sarah. I'm not going to say where I live. I live not far from her, down the street. And for her own, as a mother to a mother, I want her to know that she is a sex offender probably about seven houses from her. When I seen this on Thursday, I came in to City Hall, because I'm doing the elections, and I addressed this to Madam Clerk. And she said it was already taken off and she showed me. And I told her I had it still on my PDF. I am going to erase it. I have no... I'm a retired police dispatcher. My husband's a retired officer. We have, we're not weird people. But I just want Sarah to know, and she can get my number from Lynn, that I will tell her exactly where this house is that's in between my house and her house. Because I knew who she was before. I didn't even see her address on there. I didn't pay attention. But recognizing her, I just want her to know, as a mom to mom, be careful. I mean, this person is very close by and can probably see her house fantastically. So I just want that to be known. And I think it's awful that this list was put out and I hope this is all rectified soon.
Not on the record.
What's the point?
What's the point?
I'll give it to you.
The point is I'm trying to let her know.
No, 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 no. Guys, she just wanted your information, Barbara, and that's all you need to know.
That's all you need to know.
Thanks, Barb.
All right, you guys have a... Get this fixed.
Thank you, Barb.
There's one more.
Okay.
Yeah. She couldn't raise her hand?
Yeah. Okay.
Sue Kaminsky, Amboy Street, formerly Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I know the Dads Club. I've known it for years. It's a stellar organization. Nobody in the Dads Club would hurt any child. I also attend almost every single council meeting, either in person or by Zoom. And I apologize, my asthma is really bad. I was not going to come up here until I heard some of these things going. There are council people here, including the ones that are absent, who I really like. There are council people here that I have issues with. There is no council person here that has ever said anything about taking the fields from the children, ever. And I have talked to these people, every one of the council people, on a personal basis. And again, we agree to disagree sometimes. There is not one council person here who is not 150% committed for the children, as am I. I, as a current North resident, say all the time, the people in the South Side have a community and a neighborhood and a love and affection and a work ethic to help your neighbor, not like the North End. And I've never said that publicly. I've said that privately. That is the thing I miss most about the South End, is the community that you guys have and I had when I was a resident on Annapolis between Merrick and Polk for 14 years. I am telling you, and some of you know me, some of you don't, I say it like it is. Frequently, I'm not popular, but I say it like it is. There is nobody that would deliberately, unless someone had a personal vendetta, that is a sick human being, but there is not one person on this council that would do this. And I am very vocal. I do not like the mayor. Biggest mistake of my life is when I voted for him. I don't believe our mayor, who I give very little credit to, would do that intentionally. But I do know I listened to your meeting Saturday and people, he lied to you. He lied to you about chain of command. He lied to you. So please, let the police, let the state police, let this council, let Mr. Zaboznick do their due diligence, and I assure you, you will get a resolution. I had to come up here. I rushed. It's been an extremely bad day for me. And I want you to know, you are not being lied to by this body. You have, for those of you that know me, for those that you don't, you have my word. I fight hard about E. Course Creek.
I said my piece and all of a sudden Roger goes, "What are you trying to make?"
Who are you?
So I am just saying...
You're spreading rumors.
I am just saying, people, no one would hurt our kids. So I am sorry it happened. And I'll tell you, if I was still on the South Side with my kids, who would have been in D7, but they were too little when I left D7, I would be leading the bandwagon. Sarah, you'd be taking a second step to me. And there's no doubt of that. So, council, do your due diligence. And people, please, understand, nobody would hurt your kids. Thank you.
Counselor Chair.
Before we do that, I actually want to give a moment of silence to Sue. She recently lost her pup today. This is actually her second pup in this month. So I would like to do a moment of silence for Sue and her family. I'm sorry, Sue. I love you. And thank you for coming in here today.
Counselor Saab.
I just wanted to, before we move on to the next subject, I just wanted to follow up to a question to Councilman Wensel. Councilman Wensel, was that you on the recording?
Yes, sir.
It was?
Yes.
Can you put it on the podium on the record, please?
We're not putting, Council...
I'm not talking, Roger.
We're not going to put any recordings on the record. I am talking, okay? I'm advising whoever the Council Chair is, if you can't do that, okay? I already said it, as long as you understand.
Councilman Saab, today's the technology today with artificial intelligence, you can make anything you want.
Put it on the record, please.
Anything you want.
On the record. Say it. Say that that was you on the recording.
No, I don't know. How do I know? I see a thing on Facebook, Arnold Schwarzenegger promoting something, AI.
Mr. Baydun, put it on the record, please.
Sorry. Counselor Chair, let's move. Counselor Chair, can you let the clerk know that I am president at the meeting?
Madam Clerk, cut his app rate. Okay. Make note that he's not president at the meeting as a councilman, which you could have set up here though. What's wrong? Okay, we are going to take a quick two-minute recess. I might take a five-minute recess and we're going to move on.
Thank you.
What is it? Okay, we have one more comment. This is the last one from Ash Hoffman.
Can I talk?
Yes, you can talk.
Yes, please.
Sorry. My name is Ash Hoffman, Dearborn Heights, Rochelle Street. I just want to clarify something. I did substitute in the mayor's office for two weeks. The mayor was there those two weeks and I was not covering for the chief of staff, nor did I have any of her obligations. He has an executive secretary that's in his office that handled all of like the council stuff and everything. I had no input in that. The only thing I did was I handled calls and complaints. And if you guys actually have, our IT Director Cooper, look into who actually submitted all that stuff. You guys will see it's his executive secretary. I had nothing with that. There's only a certain amount of light sentences that can be given. I was not given any of that.
Thank you.
So I just want to clarify that. I had nothing with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess and we'll move on.
We have that motion to open the discussion.
Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome. The ayes have it.
Yeah, Councilwoman Menofsky Maxwell has departed.
Recording in progress.
Next up is Councilman Wensel's reactivation of the City Beautiful Commission.
Thank you, Counselor Chair. Do we have everybody here? Oh, yeah.
You want to read it?
Yeah, I'll read it. Reactivation of the City Beautiful Commission, recommended motion that the City of Dearborn Heights City Council reinstate the Dearborn Heights City Beautiful Commission. In addition, the following residents would like to become commissioners and are requesting the mayors to present their names to City Council for approval. Simon Yavelsman, Caitlin Yavelsman, Jennifer Farrell, Diane Paul, Advisory Commissioner.
Motion made by Councilman Wensel. I got a second.
Do I got a second? Do I got a second?
Motion defeated. Councilman Wensel, you did not have a second on that motion and it's been defeated. Next up, Councilman Wensel, Community Garden Proposal. Councilman Wensel, you want to read your motion?
There's no point. You have defeated enemies. You guys are talking with them.
I don't know if we can if we don't have a commission.
It's not what he's talking about, is it?
Okay, so, I mean...
It says grant the City Beautiful Commission the authority. Unless he wants to change, I don't know.
Well, the commission, if that's defeated, the ninth C is defeated as well.
Wait a minute, I want to amend the motion now.
I got a question though. I mean, we can actually open it up to members of the public now, I mean, members from council members. And if any council member wants to speak on that, they can. I actually do, since both of those are defeated.
Well, not necessarily, because...
It wasn't seconded, so we can't go forward.
The first one, yeah, the first one, but the second one...
Right, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, well, it just, we couldn't even discuss it because it wasn't, it's not on the floor, because we don't have a first and a second.
Will we move on?
Yes, you're on to this one.
Yeah, now ninth C, you're saying can't be used though.
Well, maybe...
Well, unless he wants to change his motion.
I meant my motion a little bit. First of all, before I do, before I get crucified anymore here today on behalf of hurting the citizens, I mean, this is not hurting me. And this is hurting just a program for the residents and councils taking it upon themselves to crucify the residents and harm the residents in this...
Point of order, councilman.
Crucify the residents.
Point of order, councilman. I don't think any council members here are crucifying anybody and you got to stop like...
Well, this isn't for me. This is for the city.
If I may, councilman, just because somebody doesn't agree with you, I don't think you need to slander them and say that they're crucifying the residents.
Well, two weeks ago, everybody was on board with this. Everybody loved the idea.
If I may, please. What I don't think is you need to do is slander this body every time somebody disagrees with you. All right, so I think you should choose the words to be differently. I'm not here to second it. But I would have had a great discussion and I'm still willing to have this discussion. But to say that, you know, the entire body here is crucifying the residents, like, come on, man.
You can't second a motion?
No, I can't. I can read a motion. I can't second a motion.
Council Chair can't second? You can second.
I know you can make the motion.
You can, council, you can second.
She just said I can make the motion. She didn't say I can second.
I'm not quite sure about the second. I know you can make the motion.
He made the motion. He can second it because...
No, I...
Can I second my own motion?
No. None of you did it first.
Go ahead. I will second your motion for discussion. Go ahead. Am I allowed to?
The second one?
Am I allowed to?
He wants to do nine B. You're still a member of the board.
Okay, then I second it.
Would you want nine B?
Yeah, we're going to go back to nine B. Motion made by Councilman Wensel, seconded by Councilman Baydun. For we like...
Okay.
... told that all the bodies are getting crucified, the residents.
Counselor Chair.
Hang on. Councilman, I want to hear from you. Actually, for discussion, the commission people that were chosen here, who chose them?
Who chose them? They volunteered.
I know.
Except for one, his name is redacted.
I understand that, but who... How could these people volunteer with who? Did they volunteer through you? Did they volunteer through the website? Did you reach out to them? Did they call you? You know, like who said these names to be chosen?
Okay, well, Simon and Caitlin, they approached me about this project. Jennifer Farrell heard about it and she said she wanted to be part of it. And Diane is a Dearborn Heights gardener president.
Okay, thank you. Why, but we have, we have almost 64,000 residents. Why would we not open it up to everybody? Why would we only limit it to one, two, three, four, five people? Why would we make it 11 people?
These are the first ones that came. We had to get this on the agenda. We could, I looked it up online and there is a form there, but you can't download it to make an application.
What I'm asking is, why wouldn't you like at least ask some of all the council members, hey, bring forward a recommendation or ask somebody from the community? Like, why wasn't I at least asked about this?
Okay, Counselor Chair, before we go any further, I just, because I know they want to recognize my three daughters that attended the meeting, Cara, Jen and Paige. So thank you guys for coming and supporting me. You guys are awesome. And I, I'm withdrawing both my motions off of the agenda. Thank you so much.
Why is that? Hello?
Thank you.
Councilman, I'm just asking you a question. I think the body here didn't ask you. I'm asking you, why couldn't we open this up to more, to other people?
We haven't.
Well, I did. I...
Well, I did, I wanted to get this on the agenda.
I know, I'm all for-
I had to have this in by Tuesday morning, Tuesday by noon.
You can have a motion.
That's all I could do.
You can have a motion to reinstate it.
It'd take me all day to get it.
Councilman, to reinstate, reinstate the commission is one thing, but to reinstate it and give your recommendation of who you want on this commission, I think that's, I don't think that's fair.
Well, there was a person on here that was all gun home. A person sitting in the audience today. No, I'm not calling you out. I'm not talking about you.
That's fine, may I speak?
Sure.
Thank you. There's multiple reasons as to why I pulled out today. I've been very busy. I have no way of participating. And to call me out like that-
No.
It's, no, Tom. Hold on, hold on, okay? Let me speak, please, please.
Point of order, Councilman, let us speak.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's keep it respectful, please.
I'm trying.
Thank you.
There's been a couple of points that were just made that make a lot of sense. And I thought of those points too.
What's that?
Why hasn't this been opened up to the whole city for people to get involved with? How many people has he reached out to? He reached out to me. I gave him another person who just wanted to advise, okay? I don't, I don't think this was the right route.
No, absolutely not.
I don't, and here, hear this. It's August. There's not a whole lot that can be done. As far as planting, fall planting, there's not a whole lot that can be done. I think you got between now and April or May to really open this up, give it more attention, put it on websites, put it on council face, sorry, council's Facebook page. Let more people who might be more of an authority on this to step up. And there's a lot of people that may be like, what the heck? When did this happen? I didn't hear about this. This isn't a personal attack on anyone, but it makes more sense to just kind of slow your roll on this. Whether you want to hear it or you don't want to hear it. This is my thoughts. Among the other reasons why I took a step back, this is one of them and it's a perfect point. There's 60,000 residents. There's Boy Scouts, there's Girl Scouts. There's all kinds of organizations that could do this. And it was pointed out that there's some college students who can do this as part of their agricultural credit.
I reached out to Michigan State.
So, I'm, please, I'm talking, please, please. I've been respectful. So, I would, I would say you were right and just kind of take a step back. Let's get this more organized. Sometimes we have great ideas and we want to go fast. But it's not, first of all, who's going to appoint the commission? Is it the mayor?
It is.
Okay. So, please, please.
Point of order, sir, nothing from the audience.
I've been really respectful. I haven't yelled from the audience. Come on, guys, please.
Guys, come on.
Don't I deserve that?
Thank you, sir.
So-
Thank you, ma'am.
If I'm going to be called out, I'm going to speak. And that's, that's my, I don't think it's ridiculous. It's August. There's not a whole lot we can do. And get more organized, get other companies involved, maybe Home Depot, maybe court people who can serve some time and get this done as far as clearing areas or doing whatever. I think there needs to be a little bit more research. And it may have to wait for the next administration, but it gives time to really do it right.
You know, what I, what I'd like to say is, I think this is-
I'm done, thank you.
I encourage the council member and I like this a lot. I think we can still move forward with this commission, but I don't think one council member should make the decision for everybody.
I didn't. I reached out to one person and they advised me of three others, okay? And this is nothing new. This, this has been going on for months and it's been put on the back burner for months by City Council. I've mentioned it, I wanted it months ago. Since this didn't happen this fast, slow your roll. They slowed my roll, you know. I, I, back in April, I requested this.
Where, did you email it to us?
No, I said it at City Council meetings. Everybody's heard it before.
Council Chair, Council Chair. I think it was about six months ago, Council Chair Protem brought a motion forward requesting that the mayor reactivate the commission. And that hasn't been done. But then I also wanted to state that I think that this body has asked the mayor to provide a brief summary of the appointees to council. And I don't know that that's-
And in the backup, also in the backup, you guys got, there's, we've already had a planned, a plot plan of this piece of property. We spent, we found a piece of property. We've made a plot plan, a preliminary design. We've got-
Who, who, hold on, who found it?
And where is it?
Hang on, guys, guys, let the councilman finish.
We've got, we've got organizations. And as far as August, September, just like every, all these things I bring up, Charter Amendment Review Committee. This, this happened years ago. I pushed for it and it's always, Tom, okay, let's go through the procedure. Years have gone by since we have a Charter Review Commission.
No, I think what happened with the Charter Review Commission-
It's been going on for years. Let me finish though.
I just want to answer to the Charter Review Commission. Mr. Parishake, she got up and said, "Councilman Wenzel, if you want the Charter Review Commission, you've got to put on writing what you want." You're saying you want a Charter Review Commission and you referred it to Roger. I think Mr. Parish, and then you told Mr. Parish on the record, you're right, I'm going to review it and I'm going to come up with something.
I wasn't the only one wanting this commission. Everyone out here wanted it. Everybody wanted one. Is it up to me to make, you know, to come up with all the legal stuff? If I did, you know what? I'd be chastised because I didn't dot my i's across my t's, something.
Well, you have the legal stuff for the commission already. You just have to pick up when you're going to have elections and nine people. You have a turnover in the mayor. You have a new administration probably coming in. You probably want to have, it's all laid out. It's just when you want to time it and when you want to do it. Because with the mayor giving his announcement, he's not going to continue, that changes everything. I wrote to the AG's office, I got the process. We had a meeting on this already last January. Everything's put together, Tom, it's just the timing.
What are you talking about?
And when we're ready.
You have to have a nine, you're going to have to have a vote. You're going to have the nine people running to be on the commission.
No, there's no number specified.
Yeah, there's a vote, yes.
No, there's no number specified in the bylaws. I got a copy of the bylaws. There's no number commissioners-
He's talking about the Charter Review-
Oh, Charter Review Commission? Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, now, this is the time of year. So what you want, what do you want to do? You want to start in springtime, building these boxes and delaying the process by weeks or months when we can do it this year, plant some, plant some perennial plants there. And come springtime, the boxes are in, the raised beds are in, and we're ready to hit the ground running. Instead of delaying it again, kicking the can down the road, famous phrase by Ray Ruscat. So here we are, let's kick this can down the road a little bit more. Let's put this community garden off, you know.
Are we talking about the commissioner, the community garden? B or C, I'm confused.
Yeah.
We're talking about the only motion on the table. All right, let's take a vote on it. Hang on, guys, hang on, everybody needs to be so hostile.
I mean, we've been wanting, we've been wanting a City Beautiful Commission. I was a member of City Beautiful Commission 10 years. And I don't think, I might be wrong, but I don't think there's anyone out there that doesn't want a City Beautiful Commission again.
Councilman, I don't think anybody said no to the Beautiful Commission. I think what my issue is, I can't speak for everybody else is, you chose people, you didn't communicate with anybody on council. You said, well, if, you know, if you don't want to choose these people, you're crucifying the residents and the residents are having to face for it. No, you should say, let's reestablish it, let the council be able to put somebody.
Huh? You're putting words in my mouth. I just, I just wanted to reestablish the, I just wanted to reestablish the City Beautiful Commission. Then I was told that you had to have, you had to have members. So I said, okay, I got, I got, I got four hours to get four members at least. Tuesday, Tuesday morning. So I said, okay, I got to get members now. So I didn't have time to publish it on the website. You know, I got four hours before it's eight o'clock in the morning Tuesday. And I'm going to go to the website and I'm going to promote it, you know? Now that we've got it, now people can, people can sign. You go on the city's website and there's not even a category. There's all these commissions, there's, the City Beautiful Commission is on there. So they cannot, if a person wants to be on the City Beautiful Commission, they can't because it's not on our website.
Councilman, you know, last week-
I'm just starting to ball rolling.
Last week you told me, hey, can you get this on a special meeting? And I told you, yes. You had more than just four hours to do this. Last week you told me this. I said, yes, you actually texted me Monday and you said, thank you for doing that. And I said, you're welcome. And so like, you had more than four hours to come. And what I'm saying is, or you could have said, hey, councilmen, I want to put this together, here's some names, or message some of the council members, here's some names, or can you guys give some recommendation? I'm all for reestablishing the Beautiful Commission. I don't know why you're so like, so insisting on it has to be these people.
I gave you the email, so you knew about it, right? I mean, I sent you this information. You just said I sent you this.
No, you texted me saying thank you.
Okay, so you knew about it.
For thanking me, yeah, I thought you were bringing, to reestablish the Beautiful Commission.
Hey, Councilman, you know, maybe we should put this out in public. Maybe we should put this out in public or something.
Councilman, all I read was your text saying, thank you for putting this forward.
I sent it all to you, I sent the motions.
This morning?
No, no, that's amended motion this morning.
Oh, okay. That's the second one. That's the one that you texted me. I'm going to hear from Mariana.
Thank you, Council Chair. I just wanted to invite anybody that is interested in joining any of our commissions to either go to the website and fill out the form. And if there's any errors there, again, the mayor's office is the one responsible for appointees and I'm sure the clerk's office can also help. There has been a lot of interest. We did put this in social media quite a bit a few months ago and quite a few of the commissions have been reactivated. Quite a few of them have been reactivated and we're getting interest in some forms that are coming through. And again, I just want to remind people, we can't reactivate things if there's no interest from the community. So it starts with sharing that there's commissions available and inviting any members to participate.
Where did you guys share, where did you guys, I mean, Councilman Wenzel just started from five people, four hours. You're saying you've been publishing, you have got no interest?
It's been in social media. John Cade can, sorry, our social chair has been posting it and it's also been in our e-newsletter and both of the e-newsletters that we have released. So if you have more ideas of where to share it or if you want to share it in your own personal social media accounts because you have a lot of residents that follow you, please do so. But there is definitely a process and we haven't received a single request in the mayor's office for the beautification commission unfortunately. So if those individuals are interested, just encourage them to reach out.
And this is not, this is not, we're not jumping into this. You know, this has been planned and gone for a long time.
I think we're all interested in getting some of our commissions going again, like the City Beautiful Commission. It's, the administration has a role and we have a role. So let's, let's see if we can't do that and get it going.
Let's kick it down the road a little bit.
The mayor's office will work with us.
Let's postpone it, let's postpone it.
Yeah, it's just, good evening again, Zohair Alhak. You know, the councilman just withdrew his, you know, motion. I recommend we do not waste any more time. Let's move on and let's do it in a different way which is beneficial for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do it after the mayor leaves.
Yeah, there you go.
Do you want to take this to a vote? Do you want to take this to a vote? Props, sir, nothing from the audience, please.
Council Chair.
Do we have to take this to a vote, as we would do it? How does this work, Madam Clerk?
When you take-
Yeah, because does that mean we appoint these people?
No, take it to a vote. Take it to a vote.
Council Chair. The problem is, does that mean then we appoint these people? I, I think we all want to see the commission-
See, that was my issue. That's it, I just want to know, like, who can we like, I want to open this up to everybody. Maybe Rose wants to be on the planning.
Yeah.
You do want to?
For months, for months.
Council Chair, I think my recommendation would be if he wants to amend his motion to withdraw.
You want to amend your motion to withdraw?
Which one?
The first one, that's, we only have one on the table, one on the table.
You want to amend your motion to withdraw?
The motion.
Oh, I forget, you know, I want, I want the residents to know how the council feels about this. We'll take it to a vote.
Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
To appoint the commission.
So this is to react-
To reinstate the City Beautiful Commission.
But you're also reinstating and appointing.
Right.
Well, no, no, because I, my amended motion, there's, let me, let me read my amended motion. I sent it to you, but you said you got this morning.
It says the mayor to present, but he's assigning.
It says, um-
Why don't you read the motion again?
Okay, okay. The amended motion, well, this one was just, uh-
It's not the backup, this is just a recommended message to read.
To reinstate the City Beautiful Commission. That's my motion. And then what you have to do is, you can't, we cannot appoint commissioners. I found this out, I talked to, I talked to Lynn and George about this. We cannot, we cannot appoint commissioners. The commissioners have to be, commissioners interested have to be given to the mayor. The mayor has to present them to City Council for approval.
Correct.
So that's, that's, uh-
So all your, all your motion is right now to reinstate the Beautiful Commission?
Yep, because I, you know, I had, I sent the amended motion, but yeah.
What's that, Councilwoman?
That's okay, that's okay. It's been a long day. What we discovered is there is no ordinance for the formation of City Beautiful, so we couldn't find that. But there are bylaws.
How do you have a Beautiful Commission for so many years and I have an ordinance?
I wasn't here. I, I don't know. We, we tried to find, you know, we looked through all the ordinances, we looked through all the backups.
Remember, it's gonna be, the mayor's gonna have a lot underhand.
This is true. Um, Council Chair, I think the last appointment there expiration was 2013.
Guys, point of order, please. Nothing from the audience.
So it's like 2013 was the last time.
Just take it for a vote, please.
Yeah, hold on. What are we voting on? I mean, no.
We either turn it down, or what?
Reinstate, reinstate the Beautiful, City Beautiful Commission.
We already did that as a motion.
We've already wrote?
We already did that. Um, the City Beautiful, Councilman Ahmad did.
Right.
Was it that, didn't he?
Oh, you guys were on that already?
Requesting that the mayor do that.
Right.
You remember that, too?
Yes.
Yeah. Don't we vote on it, or?
We did vote on it. It was a council motion, and it was never fulfilled.
Okay, so it's been reinstated.
That was the same thing. It was, I can go get the motion.
No, okay, so now, so then, this one, can we just, can you withdraw this motion then?
No, I withdraw the motion, 'cause it's already been reinstated?
Yeah.
It hasn't been reinstated.
Wait a minute, Council Chair, the request?
It has not been reinstated.
The request has been made to reinstate it. It has not been done yet, for the mayor to reinstate it.
I don't, I don't think we need the mayor's approval to reinstate something. It's already been established. I think city council can vote on to reinstate it to get it back on again.
Where's Gary when you need him?
Yeah.
Council Chair.
Yeah, but Councilman, can you tell us on that? Can, can the council reinstate?
The, the, the commissions there, it just, there's nobody on it. There's, there's, it hasn't been active.
Right, that was the question, I think. Who can reinstate?
We encourage the mayor's office to make the appointments.
So can we just then redo this motion again, just to say that, please call the mayor to reinstate this?
Well, it's already been done, but it hasn't happened, so...
Guys, nothing from the audience.
The request has already been made of the mayor.
You know what, man, I agree with this. We have to reinstate this commission.
Right. You can do it again.
I mean, I think there needs to be a second motion on the table here. It's simply saying, we're calling on the mayor to reinstate the City Beautiful Commission.
Can't we do it? I mean, I guess we can put this off. You know? I mean, my, my second motion, I'll read it, but I'll...
We haven't, sorry, I'm so sorry. Are we, are we done with the first one, which we haven't voted on?
Hold on, we have to figure out. So let's put this one aside, Councilman. So let's, let's refer this back to Councilman, uh, Wanso.
So 9B is being referred back to Councilman?
9, 9B.
9A.
9B, 9A.
No, 9B, 9A was...
Oh, 9B, yeah, 9B and 9C.
Let's refer 9B and C back to Councilman, uh, Wanso.
So move, okay. Okay.
Hold on one second, we're gonna go, yeah. Let's do one at a time, please.
Okay, let's refer 9B back to, uh, Councilman Wanso. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
The ayes have, uh, referred back to Councilman Wanso.
Okay.
Next up is 9C.
Okay.
Councilman Wanso.
This is, uh, the city council to grant the City Beautiful Commission the authority to access, plan, develop, maintain, and accept monetary and material donations as per the agreement by city council to have, uh, commissions able to receive donations, give them access to the community garden, to the property noted in this motion. Okay, now, in the meantime, the passing of this motion, and the passing, in the being, I'm sorry. In the meantime, between the passing of this motion and the names being presented to the mayor and given to city council for approval, the city council give immediate authority to Simon and Caitlin, acting startup team, to access the, access plan and start the developing process of the community garden. That was my second motion, because I didn't, I know, I heard that...
Hang it, hang it, hang it. I know, I'm trying to second it. Is this the 9C?
Is that 9C? Yeah, 9C, yeah.
Second for discussion.
Motion made by Councilman, uh, Wanso, seconded by Councilman Sab.
And what I, what I was doing is, I wanted to get access, give access to these, these two Caitlin and Simon, they are professional farmers. They have a big farm out in, they live, they live real close to, to me and Rose. They live on our block. Yeah, they live two houses door.
Council Chair.
And they, they wanna start, they, they submitted that plan that we have, that you, the backup, and the, the plot plan, and they, they've got other organizations, they've got Michigan State involved. And by the time this goes through the mayor's office, and again, it'll take maybe another year, when we, I'm just giving these guys the authority to, ask the council, ask the council to give them the authority to go on to the, access the property and start the development of the community garden.
Council Chair.
Are you all set here, Councilman Wanso?
Yeah.
All right, I actually, I have a hand list of questions that, from concerned residents that I got, and some questions that I said that I would answer. I would, I would ask, we ask, and I appreciate the answers. Number one is, that, where does it end up Van Borne corridor, does it say that gardens are allowed? I actually looked through...
Green space.
No, no, a community garden. Not green space, a community garden itself. My second question is, the location of this garden, that's on a main road, and that's a liability to the city, number one, because any kid can jump right into a main road. Third thing is, residents on that block called, said, what about the traffic we're gonna be dealing with? Where's the parking going?
We have parking.
I'm, 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 I'm getting to these questions. Business owners said, when there's people here and events here, where's all this parking gonna go?
There's no events.
Okay. Fourth thing is, somebody asked me directly, Mr. Wanso, is your nonprofit Jamie's Kids involved in this in any way?
No.
Would it collect any money or monetary funds from this?
I just explained that in my motion. City Beautiful Commission to take donations and monetary donations, material donations per city council approval of commissions being able to collect donations.
Has this property been tested for contaminations?
It, it doesn't matter, because the, uh, they're gonna be on raised beds, and, uh...
It does matter. There's phase one and phase two, where any, where any of those completed.
Phase one, phase two of what?
Yeah, of testing, soil testing. Environmental's done.
We did, we did one test.
What test is that?
We had, well, I mean, I'm not gonna say it right now, because it was, it was, it's an unofficial test, so I don't wanna get chastised for doing that.
So it's not a legitimate test? How do we know, how do we know there's not, how do we know there's not poisonous material in their soil, or in their grass, or underground, that we're gonna be planting and feeding people off of it?
Did anybody test the chair you're sitting in for contaminations?
It's, this is different between me and Sid, and you feeding people in a garden.
This has become a joke, man.
So, no, no, these are honest questions I'm asking. This is not, this is not, these are questions that are answered by residents. My other concern is, is that the resident asked, where's all this water gonna be collected from, and where's it gonna be brought into the property?
Well, if you looked at your, the plot plan, there's water collection systems, solar panels to provide street lighting at night, fencing around the whole area.
So my question to you is...
I mean, we didn't just, I didn't just come in here with this paper. It's been months and months and months of planning this.
Okay, so my thing is, it's actually illegal in Wayne County to collect rainwater and hold water.
What do you mean?
It's actually illegal to collect water or hold water in Wayne County.
It's illegal to do what?
Collect rainwater or hold water in tanks in Wayne County.
Not tanks, rain barrels.
It's illegal.
No, the City Beautiful Commission, Watershed Stewart Commission sold rain barrels to the public for years.
When was this?
I don't know, for years, for years. Right, Bob? Bob knows. We did it for years and years.
Okay. You should check, you should check Wayne County's laws.
Council Chair, quickly, that was to, for homeowners to save the rain instead of, and use it on their property.
It's actually currently illegal to do so.
Council Chair, I, I know our commissions can't raise money now until we have the civic association set up, which is in process with the mayor's office, because of the 501(c)(c) status that it will give it. So individual commissions can't raise money as yet. Once it's established, they can, under the treasurer and everything else that we put together. But my concern is that, I looked at the, the plan, and there are buildings and stuff that'll be constructed, even the solar panels, there'll have to be RFPs and bids for companies to come in and do these projects. You can't just assign it and pick one company to do it without properly doing the bidding process.
Everything is gonna be donated. No, we're not paying for anything. Everything's donated.
Okay.
That's the way I roll. I mean, I don't, I don't charge anybody for anything. All my, my events I put on...
I talked to the city engineer about it, and these are issues that the city engineer...
My nonprofit Jamie's Kids, we put on every event for free.
I don't finish. I'll give you the moment to stick on this, Councilman. I don't finish. Go ahead, Roger.
Yes, I, I think there are processes in the construction and everything else that has to be done, and if there's donations, as I said, the commission can't raise the money yet, uh, until this association's approved. However, it's a, it's a, it's a honorable plan, and I, I respect the councilman for putting forward. Uh, I think there are concerns that Councilman Sab raised that have to be addressed, and there are rainwater, there's billing for rainwater runoff, everything else, and we do the water bills, it's divided by the Great Lakes Water Authority. When you look at what's, what's charged for wastewater, runoff, and everything else, there's different prices and stuff that go into it, and different considerations. It has to be studied a little more intense, and I, I would run it by the city engineer and get a, an understanding and a report on it, just like they do with the planning commission. And I don't know if this would have to go to the planning commission before it comes to us, to put this project in place.
Council Chair.
I, I know, I just wanna add something real quick. I, I don't know why we always have to, like, scare these things away. I mean, I don't, I don't mind us doing this. Uh, I just don't think that, because one recommendation of, I think this is a great idea. I think, I really do. I think it's a great idea, but I don't think we need to choose Simon and Caitlin today. I think what you could do is, you can go off an RFP on this, and let people bid on this, and see what best bet comes out for the city. And I think that's the right way of doing this. I think this is a great idea.
There's money involved, Council Chair. We're not paying anybody anything. It's all volunteer.
Are these people gonna make any money?
No, we're not making any money.
No, no, I know, but Simon and Caitlin are not doing this just to be nice people to get...
Yeah, they are. A hundred percent.
No money's gonna be made on this?
No money at all. Anything, if you read the motion, and, any, anything that, any, any gardener, they're entitled to take their own crops home with them, and consume them, and consume them. And, and any money that is made would go back into the City Beautiful Commission to help, help maintain and improve the community garden. I didn't, you know, this is, I didn't come up this morning and make up all this stuff. You know, we've been doing this for a long time.
They could put a memo of understanding to the council, itemizing and explaining exactly that they're not getting any money.
I did.
What they're, they have to put, the company has to put a proper, uh, request in writing to the council, exactly what they're doing, that they're not making any money, because there's gonna be costs incurred in, in fulfilling the project, especially what I saw from that thing. So someone's gonna have to put money forward, and what are they gonna be investing? Not just not being paid, what are they investing into the project? And then who's gonna own the land, or keep the land for how long? And, and Councilman Sab is absolutely correct about the, the soil samples and environmental quality engineering tests that have to be done and performed before the county would ever let you have food being manufactured on any property, especially what was there before. And I've, I've worked with, with the environmental, with representing banks in terms of, of the responsibility to clean up the soil, and how much it costs to take that soil and treat it and put it back.
It's not cheap.
No, no, it's not.
Roger, if you heard, I heard my statement, these are gonna be raised beds...
Doesn't matter.
Where fresh soil is brought in, and grown, sealed on the bottom, the container, container gardening. We're not gonna grow anything. The only thing that they planned on growing in the soil that's there are perennial plants, flowers, that go around the border. Have they been in contact with fencing companies that wanna donate fencing? They've been in contact, I mean, I've been in contact, I don't wanna say who, but, you know, 'cause I don't want these people getting chastised, too, you know, if God forgives, because they've been so nice to me, and I don't want them summon, calling them and saying, hey, you know, you're doing this gardening without legal process or something, helping out with doing solar panels or something. But this has been going on for a long time, not just today.
In their memo, in their memo of understanding, they can address the DEQE issues and put a full proposal together, so we can see exactly what they're talking about. That's the professional way to do it.
Yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
Not one thing in here talks about that nobody's gonna make money on it.
I said, there was something else I sent you guys that says that.
This is the backup that I had.
I know, but I, I'll find it. I'll give you, let's just put...
Tom Wanso will oversee any contractual work during the installation of infrastructure. A board of volunteers will develop identifying a community organization that will collectively operate the garden on a long-term basis. Donated meals with the harvest foods, as well as identifying recipients and organizers for donating products and, uh, uh, I'm sorry, produce, producers on meals. I think you want to put products and meals. With the goal being that once relationships are established, the volunteers, margining organizations, will assume operations on that in the city. Wanso here says, nobody's gonna make money on this.
I sent you, I'll find it. I, I sent you, I, I sent you all this information. I mean, if you didn't gather and store it properly, then I'm sorry. I should've put it all in one packet, but...
Council Chair.
By the, I know, I just wanna tell them, like, I, I did send this, I did it as a great idea.
Council Chair, can, I have an input. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think we need to have a plan, activate the commission, and then they come together and review the current bylaws to see if they're gonna work and address any concerns. Before you go...
Forward.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Wanso.
So, so where are, where are for RFP on these properties for sale? Have you ever assessed how, how much this property can bring the city before we do anything? We have a lot of empty lots in neighborhoods.
Thank you.
In neighborhoods that we can use, not on main roads, in neighborhoods.
Honestly, I don't want, I don't want this next door to me, or it's gonna be wrecked.
No.
Yeah.
This is the ideal thing for the Van Borne corridor. We, we failed the residents on the Van Borne corridor.
I think, I think you should read the, the contract between, because I looked it over. I don't see anywhere where it says...
Green space, you know?
Yeah, but, but I, I justify green space.
Uh, green?
Places for it to prop the green and...
No, no, but, but, you're saying a community garden in the Van Borne corridor. Nowhere in there does it say, oh, community garden.
It says green space, though. If this is a green space, this is the ultimate definition of green space. You can't get a better definition of green space than a community garden.
Absolutely not.
There's no, what's, what's better?
But, I mean, you said it, you said it...
Green space.
I'd show me where it says, and, and, and the bylaws of the Van Borne corridor, where you can have a community garden. That's it.
Doesn't matter. Anything that goes on to the Van Borne corridor has to go through planning commission and approval of the planning commission.
Correct.
Every single thing on the Van Borne corridor has to meet the requirements of both Taylor and Dearborn Heights. Regardless, this has to go before the, uh, planning commission. And the planning commission will make the recommendation and send it over.
All those things in the past that have gone through the Van Borne corridor approval process.
No.
There's nothing.
Yes, everything goes through the planning commission.
Nothing, nothing has gone through it yet.
It has.
Very little.
You know, a guy just fought right now, and, and actually just won, I think, you can ask Gregor Roger about a gym that's coming up on, uh...
Maybe.
No, it has.
Yeah, it's a gym. That's a building that's already existing.
Yeah, but it had to go through the, through the planning commission to be allowed for a gym to be on Van Borne.
That's 'cause there's a...
Which is good for Van Borne, I think.
There's a...
Guys, nothing from the audience, please. We got a motion on the table here.
Yeah.
Council, Council Chair.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, you know what? Council Chair.
Let, let Councilman Council go for, uh, constant, and then I'll let you go, Councilman Wanso. Guys, please, nothing from the audience, please, guys. I'm trying to be respectful on this. Give everybody their time, Councilman, uh, Constant, and then Councilman Wanso, and then...
Two, two quick points.
We gotta move on on this.
As far as the location, um, I, that, that's a piece of commercial property that I don't know if we had any kind of a garden there, growing things that people wouldn't pull up, take the crops, vandalize it. I think there are better locations than, than that commercial piece of property. Um, and number two, I, I think there's some, I think it's a great idea, but there's some more details that have to be worked out.
Honestly, I think it's actually a phenomenal idea. I think if this, what the city could do is, I think what the city could do is, they can black fence this out, make it look really pretty, and then you can actually allow people to buy these crops, organic crops, at, at a discounted price. Um, I think this is a great idea. I think it just needs to be organized properly and better, and there needs to be some oversight, um, you know, but I think just putting a bunch of beds on the corner of Van Borne, I don't think that's the solution, and I am sorry. I, I love the idea, it just, I think there needs to be more oversight. It can't just be one councilman, you know? Selfishly, I think...
Council Chair, it's been out there for nine months, and no one else has, said, hey, Tom, I wanna help you.
Councilman, you know how many times I said, let's do a farmer's market, you said, I'm working on something, I'm working on something, I'm working on something. Councilwoman Breyer's like, I, I'm thinking about here, she's like, no, 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 I'm Beach Daily. You're like, no, 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 I'm working on something, I'm working on something. Those are like three times where I've said, let's be, you're like, oh, I got some investors, and they're ready to go.
Now I got something, now look what you're doing.
It wasn't nine months. No, man, we're having a discussion, Councilman.
I know, but I'm saying, you say...
Why is it that nobody agrees with you, all of us, and you have to chastise everybody?
Listen, I'm just saying, you, you say, how come, I, I...
We're having a discussion, that's what this is about.
We're having a farmer's market, and I said, I'm working on something, I'm working on something. Now I've got something.[1449.87] I presented.
It wasn't nine months. Nine months ago, I asked you, let's do a farmer's market. You said, I'm working on something.
I've been shot down every time I brought it up.
No, you haven't brought it, this, this is when you brought it up.
I brought it up for conversation several times. I brought it up with the, the, uh, ordinance director, they'll give me properties.
Orders director.
Yeah.
Who, that has nothing to do with us.
The ordinance department, they, they're, they have, they know where all the vacant property is.
I understand.
So it has something to do with us.
Sir, please.
Ordnance, ordinance department, they don't have nothing to do with city council.
Can you please stop out and laugh out there? Thank you.
He gets.
Please, thank you.
ordinance department had a lot to do with city council. A lot.
Councilman, what I'm saying is if you ask, why do you have to like, why do you always have to twist everything?
I don't twist anything.
Okay, if you had a conversation with the ordinance department, you didn't have the conversation with me. So only you assumed that because you had it with ordinance, automatically Mobidun needs to know? It's not fair.
You don't listen to me. Cause at the last meeting when I recommended this.
That wasn't nine months ago. You recommended it and I put it on for you, so I do listen to you.
This is like two months ago.
When? Bring me the, bring me the tape.
I said, you, you got a good memory?
I do, memory of an elephant.
I said, uh, Director LeFevre, I says, we worked together and we found this lot. Hmm? Thinking, remember that now? We found a lot together.
I remember that.
Yeah, yeah.
But you came back with a motion. You found a lot.
I said, we were working on it. And no one said, hey, Tom, let me get involved.
I, I did. I did tell you, hey, let's build a farmer's market. You said, I'm working on something.
I brought up the farmer's market. Don't take credit for that. I'm the one that brought the farmer's market.
There's no I's in me, so go ahead.
Well, you just said you did.
No, I brought up the recommendation of having a farmer's market. I never said I brought you the farmer's.
I'm withdrawing all my motions, all both motions.
Thank you.
Well, there's a motion on the table. Do you?
I'm withdrawing all my motions.
Do you want to refer back to?
I'm withdrawing all my motions.
Are you seeing you on? Okay, motion to withdraw. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
No. And a clerk, please take roll call.
Nancy Breyer. Yes. Robert Constant.
Yes.
Hassan Tab.
Yes.
Mobidun.
No.
Tim Wenzel.
Yes.
I'm ashamed to hear this.
Thank you. Next up, we're gonna move it over here to, uh, comments from council members.
Council chair.
Go ahead, councilman.
I want to once again, um, apologize to the D seven dads' club for this leak that affected many families, not only our city, multiple cities. I hope the administration will do what's right. Um, go through the proper channels, through the proper investigations, identify, notify everybody properly. Um, and give some peace to, uh, to the families affected. My second, my second thing is please, to all the parents out there, please tell your kids to slow down with their cars. I mean, you give kids these cars, I say it every week at every meeting. Our streets are not racetracks. Please tell your kids to slow down. You're giving them a weapon. All starts at home. Please cut your lawn, clean front of your houses, clean in front of your neighbors' houses, throw the trash in front of it. Neighborhoods are looking disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Council chair.
Councilman, uh, I'm gonna go with councilwoman Breyer since she raised her hand.
Please go with councilwoman Breyer.
Thank you, councilman.
I'd just like to comment on the most recent, uh, that South Dearborn Heights Civic Association had at the, uh, police station, well, the justice center. Uh, we had both the treasurer and the assessor. It was limitedly attended, but it was very productive and everybody said it was one of our best meetings ever. So those who didn't attend, Lisa had some pass out material and the assessor explained a whole lot of things. I have notes if you want to talk to me later. And if I go into the announcements at the same time, or no, shall I wait?
Oh, you can go ahead, councilman.
Okay. Well, on August 27th, which is a Wednesday, at this time, we will be having another E course creek meeting. We do have some activity happening that's supposed to start this week. They're near Southfield. The 10 million that we were granted is, uh, reached, uh, reach number three, which is Dearborn Heights. So the people have received letters in the mail that their property will be affected. So it's in the process. We're gonna get some things done. Um, a lot of that property has easements that the utilities can go on automatically on your property. And they will be taking down trees and fences of need be to clear a path so that they can go in and take trash out of the E course creek. So it's in process finally. Uh, so that meeting is August 27th, 6:00 PM at this time at 3335 South Beach Daily. And on the 28th, we have, uh, will be having another South Dearborn Heights Civic Association meeting, 7 o'clock at that same location. I'll get back to you in the next meeting with who the speakers will be. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I wanna, um, I, I'll just talk quickly. I'm so sorry to the parents from D seven that this took place. I'm sorry that this happened. On behalf of the city, I hope you guys get your answers. Whatever I can do to assist and help, I want to do that. Uh, secondly, um, I want to say that I think councilman once has the right intention. I think you do need a beauty, uh, city beauty, beauty commission, uh, city beautiful commission. And I also believe the idea of doing it, I think we just have to prep it and organize it the right way. I'm sure the individuals that he brought forward are also great. I just feel like the, the, I would like to be a part of something like this. I don't think, you know, uh, I don't think councilman once was here to take anything for himself or do anything. I think he has all the right intentions. I think the reality is, um, I, I just want it to be, um, proper. Like, being said, like, well, I give you information that nobody's gonna make money on it, but this is the only backup that I have. Can only go with that. Um, you know, I'm not here to chastise anybody. I'm not here to blame anybody, like, that's, that's not what this is about. Here, but I have a healthy discussion and I don't know why. Many times somebody on this council agrees to disagree with each other, we're automatically that this terrible person is failing the residents and you're terrible. Like, no, man, you need to stop being so hostile towards each other. I don't have an issue with you. I like you. I think you have, I think you have, you know, you have, you have good decisions or you have the right thought process on this. And I think we just have to make better decisions. Um, and something where everybody's included. Um, and I don't want to say I, I took credit for wanting a farmer's market. I can tell you that I brought it up. Councilman once who said, I'm working on it. I said, great. Then councilwoman Breyer said, I want to do one, I think closer like the Beach Daily side. And he said, no, 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 I got, I got something else in place. I'm talking to some people. I will let you guys know. And great, you let us know, but I feel like you could have let us know a little bit more in depth. Um, I don't think this has anything to do with his, you know, Jamie's kids. I don't think that's what he was trying to do here. I think really what he's trying to do is give back. And I think he's got the right intentions, but we have to do it the right way. Cause like, there are some safety things. You know, does, does the individuals, uh, he's bringing forward Simon, Kalen, are they gonna, are they gonna be insured? Do they have a contract? Do we have the contract? Um, you know, the oversight and, and councilman once, so like, are you gonna be held liable if, say, the ground sunk in or somebody got sick? E coli happened? I don't know. I can tell you, I, I am not somebody that can garden. I'm terrible at it, right? My grass is the only nice thing that I have going for me. But the reality is, I think, you know, we need to plan this out properly. My vote to not withdraw this was because I like the idea. And I think this is something that the city could really benefit from. Um, but I think we just have to do it the right way. I think we can consult a little bit more on this openly. Um, and, and I think this is something that we can really, really bring to light. And I agree with him. I don't think this is something we need to do in April. I think this is something we should be able to do now and work together and work out the kinks and we'll figure it out. And there's nothing wrong with saying, you know, we want to dot our i's and cross our t's. And then lastly, um, you know, I know councilman once, I mean, councilman Tab talked about this a little bit. But what is happening, uh, on our roads is just so scary. It was every day I take a walk with my family. It was every day in the last four months, five months, I've not, I just walked through neighborhoods in all of Dearborn Heights. See how many people have left their catch basins dirty? We're a community that knows that's old infrastructure, which means we flood. Clean the sewer in front of your home. I know we'd rather see a street sweeper. Reality is, we don't have, you know, the, the manpower or the, or the actual willpower to be able to clean up every single one of these catch basins. We need to do better as residents. I can tell you that I clean mine, I clean my neighbors, I try to help out. And if anybody feels like they see, they can't clean it and they need some assistance, reach out to me. Because I promise you, I'll get it to the right people to make sure that that's cleaned up. And then, and then lastly is just the reckless driving. It is so scary. People don't realize that your vehicles can be used to harm and kill people. It is absolutely insane that somebody recently on a motorcycle directly in front of a, on Ford Road, in front of a Dearborn Heights restaurant, was just struck, a mo, a motorist was struck. And it was so sad. Person that hit him was taxiing. Guys, like, the other day I was driving, taking my daughter to my in-laws' house and every single person, every time I looked in the window, somebody was holding their phone and they were taxiing. So scary. I got two, I got an 18-month-year-old and a three-year-old, we're driving down Ford Road. I'm, I'm legit afraid for my life. And look, could I say that I've held my phone when I text, or not texting, but held my phone when driving? Yes. We all need to do better. We need to slow down, we need to keep our eyes on the road. We need to remember that the vehicles they were in could potentially harm and kill somebody. Quick, quick second. You can hurt somebody. So I think that's something that we really need to discuss and hopefully our police officers can like, really focus on those that are using their handhelds. Oh, I'm sorry, councilman.
Are you done? Go ahead. And we first want to wish happy birthday to your brother, correct?
Yeah, my younger brother. Ann Rose.
Your happy birthday to the council chair's, uh, brother, Hattie.
Thank you, God, thank you, God.
Um, I want to assure everyone, uh, the D seven parents that, uh, we're conducting an investigation. We'll get to the bottom of this. I'm confident with our, uh, new recreation director and, uh, with our police department and others. Uh, we'll be very careful about, uh, how we handle and what data we get. Um, I'd be glad to work with our city attorney and with the council chair and whoever else wants to, uh, about a, uh, data breach policy. And, um, we had this issue come up before in the recreation department, or similar issue. With taking photographs of younger children and then publishing them in the brochures and so forth for the recreation department. We now get permission and, uh, we got that worked out, so I think we can do the same. And then let us, uh, all pray for our, uh, starving brothers and sisters in Gaza, the West Bank, uh, the Middle East and elsewhere. Thank you.
Any other council members?
Council chair.
Councilman once.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to invite any council members or anyone from the city or any residents to, uh, get involved with the community garden and they could take over the project. I can give them any, any information they need that I have already obtained. Recently, um, the Church of, uh, Saint Sebastian, now known as Saint Maria Goretty, lost their deacon, Larry Gerard, a month or so ago. His daughter asked me to make a statement to, uh, he was 106 years old. And, uh, they don't want a moment of silence. Uh, the request from the family is pray for peace around the world. Um, I think we should hire, and I know other cities have it, a person that works through the city council to read the agenda packets, go over them. A person like Chris LaPointe, hire, we need a person like that. I think Taylor has one, Dearborn has one. They work for the city council, they read over, look for errors and things of that nature, things that are important to, uh, city council and the residents. And, uh, this, uh, this coming August 9th, um, the District Seven Dads Club is holding their annual field day. They'll have a dunk tank, water slide, bounce houses, uh, DJ, fire truck, we hosen down the kids, police and fire game, police versus the fire softball game, umpires' coaches game. Please come out, register your child for fall baseball and softball and also come out, register your child for their fantastic flag football program. Be food and drinks available.
What day is that, councilman?
The night.
What day you said?
August 9th at Slapka Park.
What time? Thank you, man. Thank you, councilman.
She, uh, she was on the microphone, so I'll say it starts at 9:00 AM and then it goes until, uh, after probably 10:00 with the softball game.
Is it with the police officers one?
Yes. Also, on August 9th, the Friends of the Detroit River will be holding a creek cleanup at Heather Lane Park. And, um, we'll be, we will be, it's in conjunction with, uh, watershed steward commission and, I don't know if I said Jamie's kids. We'll be, we'll be cleaning the banks of the creek and also doing park placate maintenance and mulch replacements.
What time is that?
That's at 9:00, 9 till noon. Same day.
Same day.
And, uh, I, uh, I think that's all I wanted to talk about. I had one, um, today was kind of a sad council meeting for me. You know, um, I've never experienced anything like this. And, you know, being a Dearborn Heights councilperson is not the honorable city position it once was. Today, when you are elected, you put a bullseye on your back. You must have thick skin to be, to be able to take all the criticism. And I do. In the past eight years, I have some taken, I have taken some major abuse from a lot of people, some of them in this room right now. And in most cases, you just consider the source and move on. However, when your family and personal life become targets, that's a completely different story. In the past eight years, I've had my tires slashed, my family assaulted on public streets. My pool vandalized, releasing 18,000 gallons of water into my yard and neighbor's yard and into the street. My family and I have been watched and followed. And a lot of other things that I don't really want to get into. These are very tough things to turn the other cheek about. Most recently, I suffered public char, character assassination in my involvement with the D seven dads' club. And ha, and have had my personal and private conversations recorded and shared illegally and used against me. And these are, and just a few days ago, we suffered physical threats to me and my family. I've got to draw the line somewhere. I want to thank all the people who have supported me and voted for me in my over 50 years of serving and giving to our community. I was in church this past Sunday and the Holy Spirit came upon me telling me, this is a sign from God. So regardless of the outcome of the November election, I will not be seeking to retain my seat as your Dearborn Heights city councilman. I will be taking the next 10 days to spend time with my family and evaluate my role for the next five months. Thank you.
Move to adjourn, council chair.
We've got somebody on the other end.
Can I take this over to public comments? Councilman, I will say that I can tell you, it's your colleague, friend, I won't accept your resignation. I'm not resigning. I'm not resigning. I'm just not gonna, I won't accept my seat regardless of the election.
You what is it?
If he gets elected, he won't accept his seat, is that what you're saying? In November.
Well, good afternoon.
Mr. Sir, please state your name, the city resident.
Hassan Yuen, Dearborn. I'm, I'm gonna talk to the chair, directly to the chair. You know, my son died of overdose and I don't have no grandchildren. But when you get Mr. Sob criticizing Mr. Winston over here about his daughter, Jamie, his kids are, grandkids sitting over here, it really bothers me. You want to sit there and criticize the gentleman? Excuse me. I don't like this. He sit there, tell him, oh, your nonprofit organization has a part of it? If the guy even wanted to think about that, he thinks about his daughter before he does anything of that. This is sickening. And Mr. Sob, that smile, take it off your face. Because you want to sit there and criticize a guy. But you know what? Karma, if you know what that is, will come bite you.
There's no threats allowed, council chair, please.
I'm not talking to you.
You're threatening people and don't be pointing your finger at me. Don't be pointing your finger at me like you're gonna do something, okay?
Nobody's trying to.
You better chill and slow your roll, sir.
Turn it down, Mr. Owen, please turn it down. Please choose your words wisely. I'm not criticizing nobody. Okay. I am allowed to criticize a public official when he's.
You are not allowed to threaten people.
I'm not threatening nobody.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
Please, I got it from here. He was. Please hear, sir, please choose your words wisely and if there's any threatening things that. I'm not threatening nobody. Okay. Please, guys, come on. Just, just. He's, he's just upset because I'm telling the truth. Okay. You guys don't like Tom, don't bring his daughter up. That's what I'm asking. Grandkids are sitting here, you can smile all you want. You think it's funny, this and that? But hey, karma, that's not a threat. So time is up. I don't know who's saying that, but let me say something to everybody.
We got a minute to go, sir.
Mr. Sob, think about his grandchildren before you even make that mistake. His kids are innocent. Look, make the girls cry. You guys sat there and you disrespected his grandchildren. I'm very upset about it. I'm very upset about it. I'm sitting there looking at these kids, it really bothered me. How dare you, man? You should be ashamed of yourself. You should resign. Nobody wants a, a punk like you over here.
Thank you. You all set?
Council chair.
Yes.
Let me respond to this guy. Let me make something fair. I never mentioned his daughter. I asked on behalf of 60,000 residents, today, councilwoman Nancy Breyer and I had residents reach out to us. These are questions by residents that I asked. This had nothing to do with his daughter.
We talked about it.
It's a nonprofit organization.
Point of order. Point of order. Go through the chair, don't respond, please.
Secondly, um, I never mentioned his daughter once, just for the record.
No, you did not. And that's all you have to say.
I asked the question that a resident asked and I asked it on the record. I have it written down. He can try and all he wants, he, all he does is blow, uh, blow smoke.
Thank you. Thank you, here. Anyone else, uh, in the audience? Anyone else in the audience?
I just wanted to clarify, a lot has gone on today, a lot's gone on this week. Um, I just wanted to, to be noted that, um, the accusations that the clerk was here in city hall and, and laughing. One, that the clerk was never in city hall. And two, this is, it was very serious, there was nothing.
You, you said the clerk.
Right.
Yeah, not the city clerk.
No, not the city clerk, no. The clerk that we were talking about earlier today. Um, and we took it, you know, very, very seriously. Um, I can say I'm, there was no ulterior motive if this information went out or went out incorrectly. We are gonna look into it and see exactly what happened and get the results and, and you all know, uh, shortly. Um, and we'll just get to the bottom of it, but I just wanted that clear.
Thank you.
Lynn Senya, city clerk. I just want to, um, say how sorry I am for the district, all the districts having dads' club families that have been affected by this. I wish the administration had, um, acted sooner on it and I hope they file, follow through. Um, and then a quick reminder, week from today is the election, primary election. Our office will be open, uh, this Saturday from 8:00 to 4:00. And, um, absentee ballots, get them in so that we can get them ready for election day. And the polls are open next Tuesday, August 5th, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you have any questions, give us a call, 313-791-3439.
Hello, I'm speaking as a comptroller. Um, I just want to request that we postpone the study session, given the time. I personally can stay here all night if you want, but I want to respect other people's times.
Yeah, I have your study session.
We're not?
We're not.
Okay, just making sure. I could be here all night, but.
10 o'clock.
Uh, anyone else in the audience, guys? Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening again, Zuhairam Alha. I hope you do the study session. I sat here all night so I can hear what the treasurer has to say. Uh, if we sat for three and a half hours, we can sit for twenty more minutes. Second, I always believe when we sit on the, on those chairs here, we are family, we are neighbors, we are brothers. We can disagree as much as we can when we sit here, we can bash each other as much as we can. But always with respect. And the reason I came up here and asked him to withdraw simply to keep it civilized and to give the man a way out with respect. So he can withdraw his motions and he is respectful as a city council member officially elected by the people. Sometimes we make mistakes, sometimes we say some bad stupid things. But we are human beings, we make mistakes. And if we don't forgive each other at one point, then we are not the humans anymore.
I just want to respond to Mr. Abdul Haq. I don't, I don't think, and I hope you're not referring to me.
No, 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 I'm not referring, I'm just giving you my.
But I want you to know that the point of putting something forward.
My humble opinion because the discussion went far beyond what it's supposed to be. I love you more, you know, I love every one of you here. I worked with you. All I want to say, let's just be respectful to each other because at the end of.
I want to make it clear though, for the record, that I wouldn't, I don't think anybody was being, but we're having a discussion.
I have a discussion with Tom for half an hour before we came here. And I have told them, sometimes I put motions in front of you guys and I walked in, one time I had five votes, I guaranteed that I go into vote on my motion. When we sat here for discussion, I lost two of those people. I withdrew my motion out of respect to myself, respect to the people who withdrew their support.